All right, I'd like to call the Town Act and Planning Board meeting to order on Thursday, March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, at six fifteen. Can we all stand for the pledge, please?
(inaudible)
Do you want to group them all together? And March third.
I wasn't here for February seventeenth, so I will need to abstain from that.
All right. Want to get a motion for the February seventeenth minutes?
You're gonna do all?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll do, except, well, you want me to just group, I got February seventeenth and March third.
Yeah.
And then, I think there's one more, right?
Yeah, there is another one we have to.
All right, but I forgot the date.
Last meeting.
The ones in front of me is March seven, uh, February seventeenth and March third.
Yep.
And Bernard's abstaining because he wasn't here for this, uh, February seventeenth.
Yep, well, I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes from February seventeenth.
A second.
All in favor? Three? All opposed? No?
Not opposed.
All right. Then, a motion for March third minutes. Approved.
Do you have those? Can I talk about these?
No, I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes from March third.
A second.
Okay. Um, just one correction, my name is B-R-O-D-E-R.
Oh, border.
And in some places it's B, so that would need to just be corrected, please.
Make a new motion. Bernard's being corrected.
Last sentence.
Yeah, I see two of them, last sentence in the motion and last sentence on the page. Yep, one and two.
Oh, yeah, there's two.
Yeah, I'm just seeing if there's any other ones. It's correct in the list at the top.
Right.
She's, yeah. I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes of March third, as corrected.
A second.
All in favor? All right. Now, I just lost my agenda. Oh, I got it. All right, old business, Dave Peppin, Mineral Extraction H Road, Lot two, uh, two zero dash zero zero seven, West Shore Drive, two two one dash zero zero three, application for mineral extraction.
Okay, do I understand there's been some updated documents received?
Yes.
And where are those?
You're getting to them. I think that's, I think those, all those square ones you got.
No, in addition to that.
There was something from.
Because, yeah, I need to see those, please. Oh, okay, so these are copies for everyone else.
I think, did you give me the?
So we're missing one?
It could be, I'm not sure.
Or do you already have one?
He's got a full packet. He's already got a full packet.
You already have a full packet, okay.
Couple things came, it trickled in after. We haven't seen, we haven't met since.
I have that one.
Okay.
I have that one.
Some have been changed, please. You might want to make sure, just before you're saying, I've got that one. That was the one Bernard wanted to change because of the square footage.
Uh, I didn't get a copy of that.
Forty eight to forty.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I may be heard before we begin.
Sure.
Um, okay, so I see that we have a new application or a revised one, but the questions that I raised during the last meeting that I attended, that Mr. David Peppin was here, have not been addressed. I'll wait till we're finished.
So, okay. Thank you. Just to front up the top.
Okay. Okay, so I raised some concerns that the applicant on the document, and this remains, is our Peppin and Sons, Inc. However, the deeds that were provided to us indicate the owners of the property, there are two parcels, the owners indicated on the two deeds are Acton Main Land Exchange, David J. Peppin Gravel LLC, Mann Road Pit Replacement LLC. None of those are indicated as being property owners on the application, and I understand that we're dealing with family businesses and that there may be common ownership, but we have no way or no substantiation of that. Um, and in fact, at the meeting I was present for, Mr. Peppin, David Peppin, indicated that he didn't own one of the entities, I think it was Mann Road, and his wife said, yes, we do, and I indicated, well, you know, you can discuss that at home, but we need to see corporate, I'm not done yet, but corporate papers to show who owns these companies. Um, so we still, the applicant still does not list the landowners, nor do we know who owns each of the entities that own the land. Lastly, um, Mr. Matthew Peppin, David, Mr. David Peppin's son, has signed everything, and we don't have anything to demonstrate or substantiate that Matthew Peppin owns the company or that he's authorized to sign on behalf of the company, and that's something that's required. Um, we don't have that, and so I raised these issues, you know, over a month ago, and they haven't changed, and so, in my opinion, it's premature for us to be doing anything with this application, because it's, it's not properly done, and now I understand, I'm sure Mr. Matthew Peppin wants to be heard, but that's what I wanted to say before we start on it tonight, and maybe he can clarify.
Um, yes, most certainly. Um, so, a number of things, I know there's confusion with the, our, the entities, and I apologize for that, hundred percent. I can change the application form to identify, this map that Jason's put up behind you guys, those are the correct entities that own those properties, one hundred percent, and I have supplied all the documentation showing that, I've showed all, uh, all the deeds, and then also in the, um, in another letter, which is a transfer of deed, correct. So the confusion was that when Dana Libby originally submitted his site plan, the land was being trans, the, um, money was being transferred in a lifetime exchange, and it was put into a holding company, which was called Mann Pit Replacement. My father didn't recognize the name of that company because it's not necessarily a company that we owned, it was a holding company for a lifetime exchange. When Dana did the plans, the land was owned, it was owned by that holding company. Now that holding company, it has been transferred into David J. Peppin Gravel, so with these new plans that we have submitted, we have the cor, correct, um, landowners that are on the plans here. As far as your comments, um, about, uh, some, some missing things here, I did not get any sort of formal indication from anyone, um, that I needed to supply some of these things, and I apologize for that, I know that there was some kind of, some talk about it at one of the meetings that I missed because I was on vacation, um, but I didn't get any sort of, anything formal from the board, um, saying, okay, Matt, you know, we need these things, so I, I apologize for that. But I, I am, I can one hundred percent prove to you that I am actually an authorized signer for our Peppins on Zink as well, um, I work there, um, I am the general manager and engineer there, um, I can provide that documentation, uh, very quickly, so if, if there are some things that I'm missing, um, on this application form, and you can point out in the order where, where in the book you get it right, I, I would one hundred percent do that, but I really hope that we don't get spelled out here tonight on this, because we have a lot to talk about, and I've, I've been here a few times now, I've only been able to have fifteen minutes each time, and I was really hoping to get a chance to get into this project with you guys.
Well, one of the questions I would have, I, I have seen this document before dated July fifteenth of last year, and it says, "The undersigned, being all the members of the above-named company hereby consent to the taking of, and hereby take the following action in the form of votes effective July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one." Most importantly, what the document says is that the company, which is Acton Main Land Exchange, is authorized to transfer and does transfer the entire interest in membership from Main Exchange Services to David Peppin Gravel.
So you're looking at the property on the, uh, David J. Peppin, the property on the right, one hundred and forty-one acres. There's two properties here, you're referring to the one on the.
Yeah, but I don't think that our question previously related, they weren't one of the deed holders, like Mann Road, for example, so you've still got the issue of, how to find the deeds. Um. Okay, thank you.
That one, this is the Mann Road one.
Two.
You didn't get some of the documents, though, when I, you provided us with some of the documents for clarification, because we did talk about.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
Thank God.
Yeah, so this is, okay, so what we've been given is a document that says that Main Exchange Services is transferring ownership to David Peppin Gravel. The deeds that we have don't reference Main Exchange Services at all, they reference land that's owned to Acton Main Land Exchange and that's owned by David J. Peppin Gravel and Mann Road Pit Replacement, so I don't know why, why do we even have this document?
The, the document is to show you that the deed, my, I actually spoke with my attorney when I put all this together, and he told me that this is what I should give you guys, uh-huh, and as far as I understand it, the deed has been transferred from those exchanges into these entities that you're seeing here, so Mann Road Pit Replacement no longer exists, it was a, it was an entity, um, that was created, um, through a bank for a lifetime exchange, and then those deeds were transferred. Um, I, I can get, if there's one, maybe there's going to be a revised deed, I'm not sure on that, but.
There isn't, yeah, because I looked on the registry, um, I don't see any changes, um, the entities appear to still be active, like, it wasn't like the LLCs were dissolved and so forth, so, you know, maybe, maybe it's best rather than us having a back and forth to see how the board as a whole feels, but, um, I've already said how I feel and, um, the basis for it, and I did outline all of this for your father at the meeting, and he thanked me for it, um, so if that didn't make it to you.
I did get, I got notes from my mother, and, and she said that they want, there's a confusion with the deed, and I said, okay, so I went and talked to our attorney, and he gave me the, those copies of the deeds that I submitted, and also that other document that I submitted that said that the deeds were being transferred, so whether that's been done or not yet, I, I would need to find out, but, um, clearly we own this land, there's no, I would never, we've never put this much time and energy into something that we didn't own, it's just a matter of me proving it to you, which I, um, can do in, in less than a week's time, um, I hope, I really hope it doesn't hold us up here, we'd like to try to start moving forward with the project, um, and David J. Peppin Gravel was the owner of the H Road gravel pit, which is the pit that we sold, um, and the pit that we did the donation with Carl for, um, which was further down the H Road, so that was where David J. Peppin Gravel came from, it was the owner of that pit which we sold, and Mann Pit was further down the H Road on the left, um, which is the pit that was sold, and those two pits were sold, and that, that property that went into a lifetime exchange, and then they were in an intermediary, and then their, the leases are getting transferred over to the companies that you see listed right here.
And none of those companies are the applicant either, which is another.
I can cross that out if you.
I mean, do you, do you at least, do you understand why I'm raising the issue? I mean, I, I, okay, because the permit would be issued to.
Our Peppin.
Our Peppin. Not to any of these companies, because they're not listed, I mean, it would be like you saying, well, Bernard has a driver's license, I can drive on that, you can't.
I want to.
And I get it, you know, it's, there's a, it's very complicated, which is part of why I think it really needs to be spelled out, because if there's a liability issue and we're dealing with an entity that doesn't even hold an interest in it, or that isn't insured, and by the way, doesn't have any assets, where's the remedy?
Anything that we do tonight isn't going to make it any liability.
I understand that, sir.
We get through tonight, because we're up here, we pay a lot of people, and we're going to go back to our lawyer, I'm on, so you've got to get this all changed, it's all done, but they're slow, like, everything.
Well, they're not responsible for your application, I assume.
No.
And they're not responsible for your son needing to be authorized to act, and I think we can.
We know what we're missing on that, but anything we do down tonight is not going to make any, anybody liable.
I agree with that.
So then, if we agree on that, then we should just keep going, and then get the stuff.
How do you feel?
That little thing that you're missing.
Yep.
You feel we aren't going forward? I'm not going to be on the spot, but.
Oh, no, of course not, I think it's a discussion for your whole board, not just.
Right, no, I was just going to go through.
I can go first.
That's what I was trying to do.
I mean, you look in the zoning ordinance and under conditional use per, permits, application procedure, A, it's the very first thing, name and address of the applicant and/or his authorized agent, plus the name of the proposed development copy of the deed, record of ownership, and the assistors' map and law number, so it is the absolute first thing that we ask for in the, underneath the conditional use permit, um, and I would like to see this form completed properly, um, and I still have issue that, um, with another part of it, is the property within the resource protection zone, you have no, but we went over at the last meeting that there is a three-acre resource protection area on your property, so at least on this form, you need to check yes.
Uh, okay. I have some, I have a, Ronnie's here, I can't sure to talk about that specifically, the protection area tonight, um, I'm going to let him address that, but, um, the, are under the condition that we are not in a resource protection area, and we're, obviously, we can explain why.
Well, I brought in the map.
Can we wait and go into that later?
Well, I just want to get this form, all I'm interested in is, is everything on this form being complete, just like you.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
This is, there is a resource protection area on their property, so this needs to be changed, and I'm not sure how else to, you know, prove that it's there other than hold up the map.
Yeah, I'm sorry, why I said what I did was because I understood Mr. Peppin was suggesting there would, might be some back and forth on that tonight.
Well, I don't feel like we need back and forth.
And so I'm thinking, well, if, if there is going to be a discussion, we can have that if and when we move forward.
True, true, I agree.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
I agree with you, absolutely.
So I apologize.
Absolutely, I just.
Yeah.
I just want to.
So that's where, I mean, I feel like this, this form needs to be properly filled out.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
The Peppins know that they have to, to fill out this form, and you said that you could do it, so can we move on to the next person and then come back with?
They can't tonight.
Right.
That can't be done during a meeting, uh, with what he would need to correct and bring in, and.
Please, this is the second time this, uh, fellow's been here, I mean, if he makes the changes, I mean, even if he makes changes, I still think we should kind of hear some of it tonight, just to, that's my opinion, so.
Yeah, Damon, is there anything you want to?
Let's say clear up as much as we can tonight, you kind of got a list going of what they need to do, right?
Yeah, and I, I, I just want to say, because I'm the one that raised it, I don't have a problem with going forward tonight, mainly because of all the people who are here, however, where my problem lies is that I did raise all these issues before, I did not think we would be going forward tonight, another applicant who has things in in a timely fashion agreed to canceling his presentation tonight because this one was going to take so much time, and my upset with that was, well, wait a minute, no, this one, meaning the Peppin one, should not be going forward tonight because we made it clear what was needed and it wasn't complied with, so in the interest of, you know, fairness, accommodating and so forth, I'll withdraw any objection to going forward tonight, but I want to be very clear that I will not back down at the next meeting and subsequent ones if this application and documents is not cleaned up and done properly. Fair enough?
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So we had just been through procedural meet, you know, what we're supposed to do at a meeting, so I totally support what you're doing, um, in bringing this up.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Okay, Mr. Chair, I'm, thank you, I'm, apologize.
I agree too, we're going to make sure we get it right, we need to get it right there. Of course.
All right, appreciated.
Of course.
Did you, you know, I sent you my. Check your scan folder, because that's the first one to it before. Let's check to display my maps, so we know.
You didn't find any.
Easel didn't have a top, it was a triangle, I got a square.
Yeah, you know, those, uh, you know, I mean, they, you shift together to pick it up. Well, can you bring, can you bring it up on there?
Yeah, this one's going to happen too.
All right.
We already did that last time.
Yeah, no, I understand, it's, it's complicated.
He just wants it cleared up.
A lot of entities, I get all of that, and I get it that you're, you know, you're one of the Peppins, but you're, in the documents I see, you're a general manager, not necessarily a, you know, somebody that's authorized to bind them, so that, that's it, you know, I'm, probably come across as I'm trying to be a jerk, that's not my intent, I'm trying to do it the right way, um, and that's all. Thank you.
You can go forward, now that we scared you.
All right, okay. Uh, so, we're, we're back, we haven't, we haven't seen anything since the last time we made, we came this all over with everybody briefly, um, this plan is probably one of the easiest on the eyes to look at, you know, as far as asking what we're trying to do, um, so the areas that are in pink are the areas that we're, we're proposing, trying to, um, re, remove the gravel and sand materials, um, since the last time we came in, the, the areas actually have gotten smaller, um, it was eighty acres before, it's, uh, seventy, around seventy acres total now that, um, we're looking to try to extract, uh, extract from, um, fifteen acres is near the H Road, on the left-hand side of the page, and then, um, the other quantity is off to the right over here, um, along West Shore Drive, um, so the gravel pit size has gotten smaller, we added a berm along West Shore Drive, um, it specified that we would put a fifteen-foot berm in, um, anywhere where we're a hundred feet away from West Shore Drive, so where you see those little, the inlets that come in where there's kind of locks, um, we will not have a berm along those areas, but where the gravel pit gets within a hundred feet, where you, where you see that buffer strip right along West Shore Drive, um, we've got it shown on the plans and also written in the operations manual, I think I'm putting fifteen-foot berm in right there, um, what we'll do is we'll take the loom from that's on site, um, before we start digging, we'll build a, an earthen, an earthen berm, it'll be stabilized with grass, um, and it's shown as that dotted line, uh, funky dash, slash, dot, right there, Jason, um, so we think that that will, um, completely make it so that you cannot see any part of this operation from West Shore Drive, um, it'll help with noise, um, there's going to be much, but it will certainly help, um, we think that it was just a good thing to do, so that's a, a, a plan that we've, a change that we've made on the plans, um, in accordance with some of the notes that my mom prepared for me at the last meeting, we put a berm also around the post-wash plant area, which is shown right there, um, we've got a five-foot tall berm shown, uh, around this wash plant area, there were some concerns about safety, um, with the, the ponds, three ponds that we would need to put in right there, um, so we, we showed a, a earthen berm going around that area as well, um, we specified the, uh, size of the building, we said the size of the building would be no larger than eighty by sixty, um, we've shown on the plans there, uh, as I mentioned in the past, they're, we're proposing having a, um, one thousand gallon fuel tank right there, that's going to be a spill containment area, um, and a fueling pad, so that our mobile equipment such as front loaders, um, can actually fuel on a concrete pad, and this pad will actually kind of pitch towards the center, so that if there got bid or any spills, we'd be able to collect those spills before they enter into groundwater, um, so we specified that on the plans, um, we, a few other, I guess, talking points, um, is that in the fifteen, as far as open area goes onsite, um, we are requesting at this time that in the fifteen-acre parcel, we're able to open up about ten acres, um, at any given time, so we can only have ten acres open in that specific area at any given time, um, we think it's the space that we're going to need to kind of set up and, and do what we need to do and create stockpiles, um, so we're requesting to be able to open up ten acres there, and then in the other portion of the gravel pit, uh, that portion, um, we're requesting to be able to open up twenty-five acres, um, at any given time, and that is important to us because we'll be able to have space for our crusher, which will go right there, uh, our screening plant, um, of course, we will excavate the material out, and then the crusher and screener will be located down on the very bottom of the pit floor in a, in a recessed hole, um, but it's a, it's kind of important to us to have a little bit of extra space over there to be able to concept our operation, um, and one of the last things that changed ever so slightly was the, uh, truck traffic, um, we are requesting for fifty trips in and out of the location, um, which, we're doing that, we, we had been talking about it. we had been talking about it, we leave 35 or 40. The reason why we increased it is because we want to work with the, the planning board of the town, and we made it so that the whole entire week of the Fourth of July and the whole week of Memorial Day, or sorry, Labor Day, those two weeks that we would have five trips per day. We're going to literally shut down the operation for those holiday weeks, you know, not just the, the day before, the long holiday, the entire week. We just want to have a very small amount of trucks going in there, just to do basic things, but we want to shut down for those holiday weeks. So, we're hoping that the board will work with us, you know, if we can, we, we did that for, for everybody, and hopefully we can get a little bit more trips at other times to kind of compensate for that a bit. And of course, the roads are posted and acting, so there's that sort of six-week period where we're not going to be able to come in at all. So, it's important for us as a business that when we can't get in there, that we can, you know, get in there with the trucks that we need to. We don't think it's going to be anywhere near 50 trips a day, every day, but there could be times when there's some projects. Our concrete plant will, will use nowhere near that amount, but there could be days when we get some projects and get the opportunity to bid on the project nearby, and we want to have the flexibility to have that kind of truck traffic in that event. So, we are continuing to be excited about the donations to River's Land Trust. We have Carl Davis here tonight, and he might want to get up and say a few words about, about this. And, we're, we think it's going to be a great thing for the town of Acton, I think it's going to be a great thing for the watershed square pond, it's going to be protected forever. And, we're, you see the dotted dash right away, on the bottom left there, that dash roadway, that's where the land trust will enter onto the property, and the, right across the street, I'm sure they, we might have to do a site distance survey right there, but, right across the street is where, it's right around where their parking lot is for Goat Hill, so it'll work out pretty good. The, the right-of-way, we will be able to move the right-of-way as, as we see fit because it is going through a gravel pit area, as long as we will have it in writing that we will connect point A to point B, no matter what, one way or another. So the right-of-way will be used not for public traffic to go in and out of there, the land trust will be able to take a vehicle in there for maintenance purposes only, no commercial vehicles, but they can take a pickup truck in there if they want to do trail maintenance. And, they can also use that right-of-way for a trail, for, for people to walk along there. But, we're not proposing any parking lots or public roadways, it's kind of more going to be like a, a road where they can access the property from, for maintenance purposes. So, I do have, Kyle's here with me tonight, who's the engineer over at St. Germain, and he did all the plans, he's a civil engineer. He's, he could field any questions that anybody has about the groundwater monitoring plan, if they have any questions about that. We did submit a groundwater monitoring plan. Details of that plan, we have four wells that we put in on-site, two on each respective side, so we've been able to kind of closely look at where the groundwater levels are. Our plan says that as soon as we're approved, we're going to be going out there three times. It's going to be May, right, what month is this, we have to do the groundwater testing? Sorry?
No.
It's three months, you said?
March, April, May.
March, April, May, okay. So we're going to go out March, April, May and record the water levels on-site, because that's like the wet season. And that'll let, that'll tell us like, give us a really good idea of what the highest groundwater table levels are, so that we are sure to stay our adequate distance above them. So there's some kind of details about that in the groundwater monitoring plan, but the plan says after that initial round of testing, Kyle can answer this better, we will be doing it once a year, going out there and measuring the levels of each one of those wells. So that's the most efficient way in gravel pits to tell where the groundwater levels are and to stay on top of it. Kyle can answer more about that. And Rodney's here, he's kind of a wildlife biologist. Rodney is helping me with the environmental side of this, he's extremely smart, big as brain. He's going to talk about the resource protection area, which is kind of near that maintenance garage, and essentially what he's going to talk a little bit about is that we, we did have a wetland scientist go out there this past fall, and he did an assessment on the wetland and determined that it was a forested wetland versus a, a regular wetland. So, I'm going to let Rodney touch on that. And, I guess I think I've kind of covered what I want to cover, and if you guys have any questions.
What's this nail on that map right there?
This isn't.
Yeah, it's not a public, we're not going to take public.
Well, you'd want to come up to the podium, state your name for the record, to ask, and you have to be recognized by the chair.
Right.
We just, we just caught hell for half an hour.
Right, why don't we just wait, if we have time, let them go through this stuff, because they're paying their guys to be here, and I'd rather hear.
My kind too.
I understand that, sir. So, we don't have any questions for Matt?
Not directly, he, he said that the three other gentlemen would like to speak, and we can do them in any order, I think.
Well, actually, I, I'd like to state a preference, that we deal with the speakers that are here with technical expertise first, as opposed to someone speaking on behalf of Three Rivers Land Trust. I think that is something that if we have time, great, if we don't, that's not informative of the decision, it's something maybe more appropriate for a, a public hearing. So, making the best use of our time, I would suggest we deal with the professional technical first.
No, I agree with that.
So Jason, this is where you're going to want to pull up the RP map.
Good evening, Rodney Telshaw from Flat Tiller LLC, a small environmental consulting company of its own. Thanks for having me back. I'd like to sort of downplay Matt was saying how smart I am, I don't, I don't know about that, so I'd like to limit expectations a little bit. But...
Oh no, you're on the spot now.
But the, so the main reason I'm here is for something that came up at the, the last meeting, which the resource protections zone was on-site, and like you were saying, it's on the map, it's being shown there.
Yeah.
And you asked that to be shown on the next set of plans that come then, so we said, okay, you know, we'll really take a look at that and do it. That, so that wetland has come up several times over the last year or so, with different people that have been representing Matt, and the sticking point of it is this forested, non-forested language, so.
It's not going to work because you put it down.
The thought process was, when you, when you had asked us to show it on a plan, and we just had a little bit of back and forth on how to show it, where to start and going, like how do you, how do you show the RP, the RP zone and then the buffer from it? And, you know, there's two schools of thought, one is you just take what's on the plan and you digitize it onto our plans, and then it's not really that accurate, or you can use the, the delineated wetland boundaries, Matt's had wetlands delineated out there, so we know a professional has gone out and mapped the wetland, and they said this is the boundary. So, you would say maybe we should use that boundary, that makes sense as well. So, the question then came up, how, how do we depict this? Because in most ordinances, based on the, the intent of the shoreline zoning way back when it was, when it was rolled out, was these two acre wetlands were non-forested wetlands, that they, they hold different functions and values. So, many municipalities, and the definition of wetland in the, in that part, in talking about resource protection, it will say non-forested. The Acton ordinance doesn't specifically say non-forested. So, you know, Matt had a, a wetland professional go out last year, he, he reviewed the wetland and, and he made a determination, this is a forested wetland. So, it does meet the intent of shoreline zoning, so therefore, should it be mapped as resource protection? Probably not, and we probably shouldn't have to, to set that. So, the, the question was, well, you have it shown on the plans, you can't just take it off. So as, I went back through and I reviewed the ordinance, and I, as I was looking at it, I thought, well, you know, maybe there's, maybe there is a way to do it correctly, you know, follow, follow the rules and the intent of the rules, and to not show that wetland as resource protection. And, and my thought process was, in Article 2 in the ordinance, it talks about establishment of the district, and one of the things it talks about is determining the resource protection district among, among the other ones. It says the boundaries are determined by the terms of sections creating those districts, and any delineation of them on the official zoning map may be for reference only and shall not supersede or modify such boundaries as created in sections. So some of the sections, when they talk about a certain, a certain feature, it will be like 250 feet from a shoreline. And then, so if somebody goes on the maps to the shore, the setback is 250 feet, even if it looks a lot different than what's on the map, because you actually want it from the shoreline, that's the intent. So if you use that same rationale for a two-acre wetland, and you use the intent that it was from the non-forested portion of it, you could, it would be different than what's shown on the plan, but in still keeping with the intent of the same, where your starting point is. And since this isn't forested, there is no starting point, so there, there's, there's no resource protection to show on the plan. I don't know if I explained that very well, but that was, that was the thought process going, going through that, yeah.
Can I go ahead?
I think that, I pretty much got to it, everyone, look at this document, it's in the second half of the packet, and that's basically where you stop, stop making sense to me, is that you, you say, we assume this was overlooked and it actually only pertains to those wetlands that are not forested. And so that assumption simply isn't true. This is a forested wetland, as your delineators have pointed out, it's over two acres, and turns into a stream which drains Easterland to Square Pond. And it is this, this one here is what we're talking about for, I don't know what happened right here on the map, because this stream does continue to Square Pond. Anyhow, that is what we're talking about. It is RP. It needs to be filled out on this form, and if you delineate on the ground, I think that would be great, because it's often a little bit different than the image that's up there, but it still certainly exists and is resource protection.
Okay, so, oh, sorry.
No, I was waiting for the chair, he, he can choose you or me. He probably got the brains.
Yeah, well, both of you have got brains, but we'll go with, you can answer him.
Actually, I'd like to, let you do it.
All right, you can go now.
Okay, I agree with Gavin's concern and analysis, and I, I just want to tell you what I came up with. Page 23 of 108 in our ordinance defines the word district. A specified portion of the municipality delineated on the official zoning map within which certain regulations and requirements, or various combinations thereof, apply under the provisions of this ordinance. So I take that to mean all districts, including resource protection, are delineated on the official zoning map, and that apparently this is designated as resource protection. As to your proposed analysis around wooded and non-wooded, if I look at 2.11 in our ordinance, and I had the page written down earlier, page 10, it delineates resource protection district within the shoreline zone, and resource protection district outside the shoreline zone. So, with that in mind, I disagree with your suggestion that one could take the shoreline zone and make an adjustment, or is there water, is, is there not water? The way I read that, it seems pretty clear to me that if something is designated as being within the resource protection district, the further analysis goes to whether it's in the resource protection district and within the shoreline zone, or whether it's within the resource protection district and outside of the shoreline zone. And so I, I don't see a distinction about whether it's wooded or not, or whether we adjust the boundary as we might within a shoreline zone as to where the water goes and doesn't go. So I, I would like you to tell me, you know, have I missed the mark with this? Because I don't see where I have.
No, so, essentially, like I was saying, where there are many municipalities that have specifically used, were non-forested, so they've only tried to capture those emergent marsh and scrub, scrub wetlands that are of, of large size. It was more sort of asking, was the intent of the Acton ordinance to capture all wetlands of, you know, two acres or more, specific ones that were picked out at some point during the mapping process? Or, or was it the intent to get the non-forested ones, and if we're not, didn't make it into the ordinance?
Yeah.
Those things happen too? So it was to just sort of discuss it, find out what planning board's thoughts were, and like I said at the beginning of, of the, the letter, and thanks for, thanks for reading it, just making sure that when we put this on the plan, we show it the way you want to see it, you know, is it, we start the starting point in the right place and we have everything correct on it?
Yeah. I think based on what Gavin said and what I found, that yes, it needs to be shown, is my opinion.
Yeah, it should be shown, if, if it's there, it's, I, I would agree with Gavin on this one as well.
So it says.
Yeah, I mean, if, if there is an issue to be clarified or proposed amendment, then that's a separate issue, but I think we are not empowered to step outside of what's codified in the ordinance and the comprehensive plan for the town. We, we are not empowered to do that, so.
Yeah, and that's the, the reason why I went to that. I, I agree with you, it, it clearly states, you know, the difference between shoreline zoning around the water body and then the resource protection, not associated with shoreline zoning, that's where we're drawing the line. Now I was just using that as, as an example of maybe a means to an end, if you did say, okay, yep, maybe we did, we did want, maybe the intent was for non-forested, but how would we then, like you said, follow the rules but change the map? You know, and there's a, maybe there's a way to get there, so that, that was.
Yeah, I, I don't see it. Doesn't mean it's not there, but I don't see it.
Rodney, do you want to talk a little bit about the berm pools that are coming out in the spring?
Yeah, sure, so, so Matt has a couple of other firms that are going to be going out this spring, so, wetlands have been delineated on the entire property.
Yes.
Bernal pools have, potential bernal pools have been mapped on the entire project site. The wetland delineations were performed outside of the bernal pool survey window, so they could only, site features could only be picked out as potential bernal pools, and Matt has some firms coming back out during the bernal pool breeding season to do the actual surveys to see, you know, are they, would they classify as significant or not significant? or not significant thermal pool? So that's happening this spring. You know, when the critters start moving around, it should be, you know, within the next two or three weeks, I bet they'd be able to be up doing their own surveys. And then there's also one, one section of the site that the delineation is, uh, it's older than five years, and the Army Corps of Engineers and the D E P like to see those updated, so you don't necessarily have to redeline it the whole thing, but, uh, he's gonna have qualified professionals go out and walk the site and see if anything's changed, you know, hydrologically or something like that with the wetlands since they, he's having to go over those surveys down this spring.
Seems like that right of way you have to get into the donated parcel has to squiggle around a lot of those ponds. Right down there at the bottom of the screen. So that might, might affect some of what you do down there, I would think.
It could potentially, yeah.
The site man just.
Yeah, one of these maps had it really nice. Being a little slower. Just look right here, this whole area.
Yeah.
There you go.
There's actually an existing logging road that goes through there, Gavin.
Yeah.
There's a gate right there, red gate that you can see on the right.
I'm gonna zoom in, hopefully it doesn't take ten minutes, ten minutes to refresh.
Sort of have that, that function, it wasn't an trust, it'd be, they, um, it wouldn't take much to be able to use that for walking and just getting the TV's and things in it, right? Hot pressing what's there for a road.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Right, so you wouldn't be widening the existing road particularly, you'd just be fixing it up.
That's the end, right? Yeah, that's what I was.
Yeah. Yeah, cause if in the future they did want a parking lot in there, we'd have to go through a lot of other, you know, getting emergency vehicles in there and all these sort of things.
Yeah.
That would be a concern if, you know, if you guys couldn't expand the road width. I was looking at that the other day. And it doesn't really seem like there's any better area to, to use for a right of way to get in there. Yeah.
If there are no other questions, again, back down.
That's it?
No, I was just gonna say, we probably should keep going, cause we have other applicants here too.
Thanks again for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
I'm just trying to process it all.
Hello, Gavin, Kyle Jacobson, Saint Jude, here in, January, maybe? Just in the prime. So, I guess that we do the plans, uh, ground view, um, these were prepared by Cornerstone survey, uh, we prepared the reclamation plan and the groundwater monitoring plan, um, groundwater contour. I guess if you have any questions, um, there are three extraction areas, um, and that, and that went through, you know, different opening, open areas for each of those being requested, so, repeating in case that, that's it. So, if there are any questions, I guess on, on the reclamation or proposed reclamation with leak standards in the act of the ordinance, um, we're showing three one sites, so we act it as a minimum of two point five to one site. Talking about the groundwater monitoring plan, there's a, through the maps showing areas and then a short report on, on the proposed, um, monitoring of that, that it's only water, basic water level monitoring, there's no, uh, proposed quality monitoring of the water. So, as Matt said three times this year, we, we go out and run, take a man, um, take a reading at the T B L, determine the water, groundwater level, and then see if that corresponds to our previous readings that we had. Pit hole or well will be equal, will not intersect the groundwater table, will be five feet above, um, the groundwater level, and then basically that's done through, um, when the pit is dug, they make down a small spot and just confirm, hey, we've got five pieces of separation here, we're not gonna do any process. That helps with any sort of ponding, uh, that might occur in a rainstorm with this thing determined in the name, that means that all the water that falls in the pit stays in the pit for stormwater infiltrates, uh, being a sandy, sandy soil, um, sandy gravel next, it shouldn't be issued with standing water anywhere in, inside the pit since we're standing off the groundwater cave.
Are those four wells indicated on this map?
I'm not sure if they're on this map.
Could you give us a sense of where they are? Cause you've got three extraction areas and.
Yeah.
Well, and you've got the main processing area, so to speak, so.
Yeah, so the, the idea of the groundwater contour is, is using the wells along with the, um, marsh areas, or we assume that the marsh area is actually intersection of groundwater table to the surface at, uh, lake or whatever. So we don't need to have a lot of wells out there, um, so that one well for extraction area, and this, this could be added to the next set to Rose, isn't it?
I got some, um, your plan, you have some.
Yeah, they are in, in that, um, groundwater monitoring plan, but I'm, I'm here generally, kind of where the, um, in the first extraction area along H Road, where the accessway goes, um, that we were talking about previously, the right way, there's one down there on the right hand side, um, you know, away from H Road. Second one is up in the middle of extraction area two, uh, right about where there was a light from that one.
Little button on the door.
Uh, I see there, there it is. So there's one down in this area here, um, there's one, and we can use, you know, this area, we're, we're higher up here, but then we have these intersections with groundwater table here and here, um, the other, another well is up in this area. So we have understanding of the stream and also the lake, right? The groundwater is flowing in, in generally, um, east, or west to east direction towards pond, um, and then down here, extraction area three, I believe, one, one last well.
Can you just tell us why you feel like one well in, in each of those areas is sufficient? Why you wouldn't have two or three, just given the scale of the project?
Yeah, the, I think the intention is, um, due to the amount of, of wetlands that are kind of shown, that are out there on the site, to give you some good ideas, multiple points to draw your lines. Groundwater typically follows the contour of the, um, or generally follows the contour of the land, but it's not, we're not gonna have any steep drop offs in the groundwater table, we're not gonna have, um, you know, it's generally if we have elevation in one spot and it goes to another spot on the other end of an extraction area where there's a wetland, you can generally assume that there's like a level or a, a, uh, concentration between the two points. And groundwater, you know, those contours are, are drawn by a, um, hydrogeologist, was me, um, it's not my area of expertise, but he, with the map, took the data, drew the contours, and then the real thing that kind of holds us to not getting into the groundwater table is those, is that excavation at the time of, of the mineral extraction where you're checking the groundwater table saying, all right, I'm not getting within five feet of this, I cannot, cannot get within five feet of this table, I'm feeling bad in.
D E P says every five acres you have to check it with your machinery as well, like out there.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm just, did you say that you are not doing water quality tests?
That's correct.
So, why is that?
Uh, there's no requirement to.
If everyone is concerned environmentally about the water quality, I, wouldn't you want to determine a baseline? I'm just asking a question.
Yeah.
It just doesn't make sense to me that.
So, uh, typically with, when you're extracting material that's below the groundwater table or you're gonna be influencing the groundwater table by pumping, pumping, pumping that water out, um, or having it, you know, drain out somewhere else, um, then you are required to do quality testing, you know, testing for different minerals or contaminants, um, when you stay above the groundwater table, and this is what the D, the D E P, um, guidelines, when you're above the five feet above the groundwater table, you do not need to, to, you know, follow any testing, just want to be a depth in, in the law.
So you're saying you're gonna stay, the intent is to stay five feet above that at all times?
Yeah, which is significantly higher than yourself that you're.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, but I don't know who's the appropriate person to ask, whether it's you, um, Mr. Pepin, or maybe our code enforcement officer, but my question is, were there reclamation requirements placed on the previous owner? And if so, have they been met since this land transferred? Does anyone know the answer to that? I'm sorry?
I think it was just a logging, it, I don't think there was, no.
So there weren't, you're not.
I'd have to really dig into it, but not that I, not that I know of, it was a harvest logging.
Okay.
I don't believe there was a pit on, on this.
No, I know it wasn't a pit, but I didn't know if the other purposes required any reclamation and if that was done, which.
I can't speak to that.
Yeah, okay. Maybe there wasn't, but I just was curious.
For our knowledge, there's, there's no mineral extraction permit that's ever been taken out on this property before. It was, it was all logging in the past?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
No. Thank you.
No, the, um, harvesting goes through the state, well, it used to go through the town too, but.
Do we have time to hear Mr. Davis?
Okay.
I'll double check, but, Bernard, I'll double check, but I highly.
Is he still here?
Yep.
Yeah, Mr. Davis, if you want to speak for a three, three rivers, this was, I couldn't even tell if he was still here.
Carl Davis, uh, representing three rivers, may I have a question? Questions?
No, just.
Nope.
If you wanted to speak on your behalf for them.
I, I just think, you know, it's in terms of the town, I think it's, in a situation like this, where you have industrial development, but you also have a trade off with some recreational development, I think it's a, it's a pretty good situation. You have a lot of pits in town, they don't have that, and, uh, I think this is what they're proposing here, I think it's a, it's a good idea. The Land Trust has always had, uh, folks that gave me a trail from Go Hill to Hanson Pond, and this would, it won't get us there, but it'll get us a lot closer. The Land Trust is definitely excited about this possibility and, uh, where it might create more recreation, there's obviously several little trails through there as well as there is, um, the property up on Hanson Pond. So, if we can keep the recreational values and the industrial ones working together, I think that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna say one quick thing just to, right, you know, a lot, a lot of people, questions are asked by someone playing whatever's, it's a large piece of property and there is damage ground law, which is owing to ourselves. It's, uh, when you finally get the sidewalk and look at it, there's a lot of land there, but there's very little ground, it's not a very big ground pit. It's a small sport, uh, we've had, it's pretty disappointed in it. So, I, I know it's gonna get complicated to get it through, but it's mostly a lot of land that they're gonna get and with the Stoneville Trail and, uh, it's, you know, one push and ass, we're gonna blast the top of that bumpy, you see it in square lake, there'll never be any blast or any of that, it's, it's, when we finally do the sidewalk, you guys can get to see that it's a relatively, there is, you know, I know people do it at a more big scale, my God, five hundred acres, there's hardly any value of gravel on that property. And, uh, so we're disappointed, but we're glad to help, help out the community with the land, the trails and all that stuff, but, so don't think of this as a big scale ground, it's not, you know, just wanted to clarify that.
All right, thank you. Also, thank you. Any comments, just keep going with, what time is it? Do you want to, uh, so we're done with Pepin, we'll just move on to O K M? All right, we'll move on to, uh, O K M Property Management.
Just give them a second to clear out.
Yeah, just give them the second to clear out. All right, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Welcome back.
Kyle Jacobson with, uh, O K M Properties. So, looking to put storage units over at, uh, one nine three, Fox and River, then get four, uh, give kind of an outline of what we're looking to do on, uh, like a two acre portion of, uh, of a forty, forty, forty something.
Forty-four acre.
Forty acre parcel. And, uh, you guys requested us to hire a surveyor and, uh, soil, soil guy and stuff, so we did that and they're mapped out. And, uh, one of, one of the, uh, the maps that we have, one shows a overlay of, uh, original plan, I think we also have the original plan of what we're, the concept of what we're thinking about doing for storage units. Overlay that onto, uh, the information we got from the survey company, uh, in case you guys, all of a sudden have a look at that. I'm ready, kind of doesn't fit exactly what we were looking to do, but, uh, definitely just kind of looking from the new versus what we wanted to do.
I didn't bring it up.
Yeah, I'm working on it right now, I just didn't wanna put my emails online. Bear with me.
What are you hiding?
Yeah, exactly.
Cause I think there was an issue with the, the brook that's back there, right?
Right, well, that's on this...
Right, right here, right.
Survey, it shows a seventy-five foot stream buffer. Um, of course, on this, this drawing, we don't have the position of the proposed buildings, but...
Right.
We assume it wouldn't, wouldn't encroach on that.
Yeah, um, one of the surveys shows a building along there, like, we have a couple of that, I don't know if you have, like, it's on, I sent them an email.
Is this the one you're, we're talking about, you know? I'm trying to find the other one, but...
Yeah, I emailed over, I, I have these here, um, and you should have this.
I thought you did, and I'm, I'm searching for it, but, uh...
Yeah, we don't have that.
Okay, yeah, see, that's one.
Yeah, that, and then also, one of the other ones here, which I think they're pretty much the same. Oh, yeah, yeah, it's the same.
Yeah, it's that one, right? Oh, yeah, Steve, what are you?
Okay, yeah, it's the same.
Yeah, but we, we didn't get done with the buildings.
Oh, the outline, oh, okay.
Well, this is easier to see anyway.
This one doesn't have buildings.
Right, that's, I think we just got the one call.
This is big enough.
I don't know, you should have...
Those old guys to read. Well, you're not old, but you get me.
Well, thank you.
It's enjoyable, not really.
Figure out how to enjoy it. Yeah, so we just have to figure out how to take this proposal, oh, I know, yeah.
Just right away, my first thought, I don't know.
Yeah, well, it's, and this is kind of one of my questions, is it...
It's all our buildings.
Bernard, I think it should draw your attention to land use chart, page fifteen.
Yeah, we just went over that, right?
Are you looking at that, Pat?
Yeah, that's where I was going, cause I remember we, we just went over that.
Page fifteen.
And the, the size of the building.
M, or...
Twenty-five hundred square feet, gross floor area.
So, so just, uh...
Professional land and business services having twenty-five hundred square feet or more gross floor area.
That's J.
It's J, yeah. Either way, we are looking at, if it's, if, if we think it qualifies as J, and we also have M.
Oh, no, sorry.
Um, I would say it's had, doesn't have less than that, but I haven't done the math.
For the buildings?
Yeah.
Thirty by one fifty.
Add all those together, or are we just gonna be talking as these are separate buildings? Cause the facilities...
And yeah, well, and then you have another forty by, one other one forty by fifty.
Right.
Then you have a thirty by twen- two hundred.
Yeah, I got thirty by two hundred.
Well, right.
Three floor at thirty by one.
I have one that says please review attached documents, but I, uh, for some reason, I'm not, I don't have any documents.
So, anyway...
Want me to do the math?
You can, you should have. Right. Total floor area proposed buildings, it says on the next page in this paper, would be either forty-five hundred or six thousand square feet.
Where are you on the chart?
I'm, after this page, this page states the square feet proposed in the chart on page fifteen, it would either, I think it would be J.
J. And then what's the district, remember?
It's the mixed use district, so it would be site plan review, and what we have in front of us is a conditional use form. Um, just thought I'd mention that.
Minor detail? Both of them would be S.
Cause we would be, there, in the site plan review, there are more stipulations about parking lots and things like that.
What are you saying, Gavin?
I wanna get on board as to where this project is in the land use chart, and I'm thinking it is page fifteen, under commercial land industrial, J, professional and business services having twenty-five hundred square feet or more of gl- gross floor area. And just wanna make sure everyone is on board with that determination.
So it needs an S instead of a C.
This, you guys, this had, this project started before I was even in, and he hasn't been back since, so I haven't actually reviewed the application, this, so this is...
Right.
Something that was in your, you guys' hands prior to even me.
So we're just putting, putting you on the same page?
Yeah, no, I know, I get it, I'm just...
Well, like, uh, in order to make that determination, you have this form right here that shows the building, and then the next page gives the estimated square footage of the size of the building, which is forty-five hundred to six thousand, so certainly more than the twenty-five hundred threshold. Um, so I feel like that is gonna push us into site plan review. Which isn't really a lot different than, um, conditional use, but we do have to go through the other standards.
So you need a different form.
Thanks for breaking the bad news, it sounds better coming from you.
I always get, I, you know, that's my job.
All right.
So being here the last time, I, cause I submitted this information the last time, the only thing I didn't have was the survey. Outside of that, I had the other stuff, and that wasn't mentioned.
Yeah, we just, we just went over this the other, recently. We got clear on it, and a few other things tonight.
It's funny, cause the, we had the proposed language about the storage buildings going to town meeting at the same time, remember?
Yeah.
But that didn't pass.
Right.
So we...
You said that did pass.
Did not pass.
Didn't pass.
So, storage units did not pass, cause, yeah, when I came last time, it was in that whole period of time, and that's why...
The incubation stage.
That's why the original, I came originally was, um, with a proposal without investing a whole bunch of money, I wanted to confirm whether this was a project that the town was willing to even go through.
Right.
Um, at the time, they said, the town said, okay, you know, now you're gonna get a survey or stuff, and I didn't, I mean, I just spent ten thousand dollars on this, on that, on that paper.
Yeah, well, I think you're on the right track, and I think you can do the project.
But they said denied about storage units. Did you say, I think, said they wouldn't do storage units, or did you just...
No.
Well, the ordinance, you're all set.
We have to go with our existing language and ordinance, which is your professional buildings, larger than twenty-five hundred square feet.
Yeah, I didn't wanna spend more money.
No, cause I think if we had, if the storage units had gone through, it would be conditional use.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know if there is already a property, um, that I'm already utilizing and adding more buildings to it, if that makes any difference in the, anything or not.
Well, you'd have to bring in your existing conditional use for us to add on to, or you'd have to get a, a new one, but in this case, it would be a site plan review.
Gavin, I put that up there for you, if you can see it.
Right. Well, I think if you just scale it back so it's inside those buffers...
Right, see, the, yeah, the buffer's there, which obviously until it was all put on paper, we didn't know, cause I originally came and we just were drawing the buildings set up like that.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, and then, uh, now that the survey's been done and that's fit on there, um, the one question I have is the right hand side, that buffer there, um, so, everybody, this little button on the bottom.
Look at that thing, first day I brought it up.
Everybody should be getting one of these deals, huh?
Fifty foot wetlands set back.
Yeah.
There's a little tiny nub.
So, yeah, that line right there.
Yeah.
So, that, you know, we had this soil scientist come up, and he deemed wetlands back right in that area, but, uh, I mean, it was snow on the ground wintertime, and that was just a trench that was dug, it's an old trench, probably twenty years ago, I don't know how many years, but many years ago. So, you know, it's not, it's not like a stream, it's not anything, all of it is, you know, heavy rains, wintertime, whatever does, you know, because it's a trench there, it stays there. So, the, you know, my question or my request was whether that, this line here can be adjusted at all, because it's not necessarily through the wetlands, it's not like up in here where there's the actual, you know, to actually grow. This is, you know, this is the actual, this is the area.
Bring, bring up.
I'm working on it, Gavin.
Yeah, whatever map we need to look at that.
If I'm having a site plan, you said it's gonna have to go through a site plan.
Site plan review, it's just a, um, it's, it's similar to a conditional use, but it has more, um...
Baliniation laws, don't they?
No, you have to meet, uh, more criteria.
Performance standards.
Performance standards.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And I just want to point out that, um, Mr. Smith at Northstar sent an email in May of last year to the town administrator and the then code enforcement officer, and, and one of the things he mentioned was, he wasn't clear on the square footage of the proposed buildings.
Yeah.
And so, that, that is the, um, I believe, that now having more information on the square footage is what triggered Gavin's concern about whether the site plan review was required and so forth. So, um, you haven't wasted any time or money by having the survey, that would have to be done anyway. And as for the concern about, oh, I've gotta do a different application, um, you know, we're sorry for that inconvenience, but without that information about the buildings, we wouldn't have known which way it had to go.
I mean, that's why, I, I mean, I submitted the buildings last time I was here, but that's fine, I, it, no big deal, I was, I thought we would say you got, you guys had denied the storage units, I'm like, wait, like, why?
No, no, no.
No, no.
Relax.
It's not. Um, it does, in relation to some of the questions you heard me ask on the prior application, um, are you the sole owner of O K M Property Management? Or, okay, so, you should both probably sign the application, because...
Watch for that on there?
Um, signature applicant, well, you're gonna be doing a new application anyway for site plan review.
Right, but I'm just saying, you were, you were pretty much a stickler on the other one, but if you want two signatures on there, shouldn't there be two lines, or three lines, or five lines, or whatever?
Well, that's beyond my pay grade.
Me too.
But, um, you know, I, I will tell you, the reason for that is, um, let's just give a basic, what if it's a married couple?
Mm-hmm.
And maybe they don't get along, maybe they're separated, maybe they're in the process of getting a divorce, maybe one's doing it and the other one doesn't know about it. That's, that's really the concern, so...
People would think we're married sometimes, is the way we act, so, but...
Well, I'm old enough to remember the Patty Duke Show, so...
So, all right, um, so we'll have to fill that out now, will that be like the next meeting or something?
Should, I think you would coordinate that through Jason, is that correct? The new application?
He'll come to me, and I'll touch base with Chris, that's how it works.
No, I meant to, like, get the right application going and...
Yeah, I will send that, all the information to you in the morning. Um, like I said, I didn't open this up at all, I hadn't even, you know, I knew you guys had dealt with this before I even came on, and then, uh, last I knew, we reached out to find out what your intentions were, and you were just waiting for the surveys.
Yeah, it took a long time for the survey. So, um, so back to that one question, Gavin probably seems like the one that's more in line with all the wetland stuff, but, um, so, the next question I had about the setback on that right side, uh, that I pointed out, I mean, it's definitely a ditch, and I mean, I don't know, I, you know...
Well, it's not, it's not anything that the town specifically says you need a setback on, or a buffer.
Yeah.
But the, when you go through site plan review, it does mention wetlands and, um, you know, that isn't resource protection, like the stream.
Right.
Um, but, you're certainly gonna wanna be far enough away from it that your stormwater is not going into that wetland or into that ditch, I mean, we have to, perhaps we should, we should schedule a site walk to look at that particular area and see what we, but it's not R P, so there is no prescribed buffer.
You got a fifty, I thought like that side was like fifty, and then the other side, the, where the brook is, what, seventy-five, I think?
Yes, the stream, uh, second order stream is seventy-five.
Yeah.
And, so you'd have to be at the very edge of that seventy-five to the greatest, you know, that, that's as close as you can get to the stream.
Now, as in what, I mean, obviously building, but what about fencing, or, I mean, how's that, what does the town...
Fencing should be out of it.
Anything, yeah, your, your entire building envelope should be outside of that seventy-five foot stream setback.
Nothing's touched, so that's what you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
You know, no pavement, no gravel, no fencing.
Yeah, we have a reasonable, you know, setup inside of that, but I mean, obviously, there was a few areas where I could tweak, and obviously I'd like to do that, but...
Yeah.
One, two, three.
And...
And the, the buildings are not necessarily a hundred percent set up, I mean, that's just giving you an, I'm just, uh, you know, an outline of what we're doing.
Right.
Yeah, he wasn't sure.
Especially now, knowing that my fence has to get back, I'm probably gonna end up moving that building further back, uh, which would make more sense than leaving it like that. That, the, the building to the, uh, fire, backside of the property, oh, no, I'm sorry, I guess I should have kept, yeah, that building is it, if that was pushed back further...
Which building?
Forty by one fifty.
Building D?
Yeah, right there, bring it back further up this way, um, and that way, it'd be easier for, cause it's only gonna be a one-sided building, or, that's gonna be for like RVs and stuff, that's what my in- intent is, is to have RV parking for that, that's gonna be a bigger building.
Right.
Um, and so there's only gonna be one way to pull in and pull out.
Right, so people would be backing their vehicle into that.
Pulling in or backing in, right, instead of coming this way, cause that's gonna be a, a solid wall.
Right, right.
So, um, you know, so I mean, this was originally just to get a kind of a layout of what we wanted to do for buildings, and obviously it has to shrink because of the survey situation, or the land situation.
That building on the right, you eliminate that, and you're pretty well in your box.
Yeah, right, and we discussed that, or what the, uh, what we could do is bring this building further over here, and stay, there's the line, there's the seventy, fifty foot, whatever the setback is.
Seventy-five.
Uh, so we could, yeah, so we could bring this building over, and, and if we have to cut it back, so that way it ends, you know? That's one, again, that's one that I haven't sent you that, I got a drawing of, but, for today, you know, I was just, you know, I mean, I mean, obviously the buildings can move a little bit, the size of the building be, you know, if you kinda tweak a little bit, I just wanted to get you guys to understand generally what we're looking to do.
Actually, put it down that right, right corner there, kinda offset this way.
Yeah.
You can fit it right in there, and you'll have ample room among the rest of it, looks like.
Fit it around, yeah, yeah.
So you wouldn't lose, lose the building, that's, that's a lot of space.
Right, right. Uh, the, now, right in here, see that line right there, and here, I had too much coffee there, but that's a pretty tight squeeze now, um, that's another reason if I push that building back further...
Right.
Then I'll be able to squeeze everything in. But yeah, so that's kind of our plan, we just wanted to get back with you about that, and just, because, you know, the next stage, well, obviously we're gonna redo the, um, application, but, uh, the next stage would be engineering and stuff there. but, uh, the next stage would be engineering and stuff there, which costs a lot more money. So, we just kind of wanna inch our way as we go, you know?
Yep. Also, if one of you, you don't necessarily both have to sign everything if, if one of you designates the other as their authorized agent.
Yeah, we can, we can go off violent.
And Jason has the forms for that.
I don't know if God has or interrupt.
Yep.
Right, but it is on violent aguster. As a property, we're a metal seat, we each have a hundred percent.
I think we did though, because Dennis is the only, Dennis, I brought up that.
Okay, thank you.
I'll send you a letter of authorization, like, or, or you guys can just write that.
If you want.
The letter of authorization just gives speaker.
Jason? Can you bring up the meetings, uh, the minutes for these meetings that we had with them? Was it one, one or two?
I can, but I can't do it right now.
Yeah, no, not now.
For next time.
For next time. Because I think there were some other things that were going on in my head that I think, because Dennis was involved with it too. But I think, I just wanna cover all bases that we had, because we did have a, kind of a decent discussion about this. I do remember. And I think we said some sort of...
That was back in very beginning of June, I believe?
Or, or mid or June. Yeah, probably. It took us, we need to get back to you because we just couldn't get a survey to get those jobs on. I'm having the same problem with another project and not surveying, but, uh, for sprinkler system for a building, I can't get anybody. I've had four people to look at it. No one's giving me quotes, no one, everybody's too busy. It's crazy.
Right. No, I just wanna make sure. I think there were some things that we brought up about, I don't know.
I don't recall, I mean, in the meeting itself, I don't recall anything being brought up that was... The, the only things I recall was one, the, the town had no full understanding about their self-storage units yet. They hadn't been fully accepted or agreed upon or whatever. And, uh, and, and in fact, they needed a survey to outline where, where the water, uh, I forget what you call, watershed area and all that stuff was, so. I think those are the two areas of concern that I can recall.
Were you with us that?
We're sure on the number of buildings too. There was a little discussion around that that I remember.
Yeah.
About how many?
How many you wanted, yeah. I remember you were talking about, you know, we weren't really sure.
I think there were like times of operation and stuff too, uh, for some reason times of operation and stuff, I think we brought up. That's what's drawn my...
It was the lights?
Yeah, lights and there's operational, if you're gonna have people in and out of there every, at certain times.
Yes.
That's what I'm thinking, that's why, but he wasn't here, so if we bring up the minutes, Bernard, you can look at the minutes and understand and get up to, up to date.
It starts six, six, four, one. That's for site, that's site plan review and it's quite thick. So, just FYI. That's what, that's what we have to go by.
I understand.
Yeah, we talked about that and, uh...
Yeah, there is a thing, because Bernard wasn't here, uh, because he took Dennis's seat, so I'd just rather have her bring up the minutes so he's on, up to date on it and stuff. And I thought we had that conversation, but...
We have a lot of people in and out of there all the time, either, because we got people living there, so...
Yeah, and, uh, you know, it would be a gated, a gated, uh, thing that would be blocked. You know, I mean, the code would not work after a certain time and all that, just like, just like any other place, uh, or, you know, in modern places.
Right. Yeah, because you have three or four close neighbors.
So we wanna protect what's going on there just as much as, you know, the neighbors would wanna, you know, see things going in and out of there as well, so. Whatever the appropriate time is, which, you know, those are all very flexible. We like, you know, we've got multiple properties and businesses that, you know, we work with the towns and stuff like that, and the people, neighbors and stuff. We live in the same neighborhoods too, so...
Alright.
How much, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Here's your minutes right there. If you're, you're gonna just quickly glance over them. That's all I have for, um, it was July thir-, uh, June third or something like that.
I'll have to find my notes on it.
Yeah.
Because I think I took some notes, like how we discussed the operation hours and stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
Yeah, that's all definitely workable stuff.
Right. And then you said you're gonna add a septic as well? Is that...
Uh, septic, not for, for the other part of the property?
Yeah. You're gonna add a septic here, did you say? Is that what I heard?
Nope, nope.
No, okay.
So, the other part of the property, I mean, it's all one property, but where the, all the other buildings are.
Yeah.
Um, we, that's the next thing we wanna do is put in a septic system for that area to facilitate those buildings there. So, right now they're all just storage, you know, storage buildings.
Alright. P behind the building type buildings.
Yeah.
Alright, I get it.
I mean, there's a septic on the property now.
Yeah, for the house and the office.
About, um, how much, uh, material are you gonna be taking out of there to level out that hummock? Are you gonna be extracting anything? Are you gonna be flattening it out? What's your general plan?
I think we're gonna, you know, obviously it's gonna get knocked down and spread out, you know, it's probably gonna be built up. I mean, that's the, you know, when we hire the engineer, they'll tell us all that stuff. I have no idea, but, yeah, I'm sure we're gonna whack down some of that help, um, and move it over.
Okay.
Yeah.
Those minutes were June.
I mean, we can read through some of these site plan the, the submission requirements if you're interested, or you can get a copy from Jason and go over it yourself and try to put it on, uh, I think it's, I'll just send him copies.
He can really just go through it.
Yeah, so, alright, so we're gonna need an application to fill out with and then all that information, uh, we need to, um, kind of figure out for the next meeting, obviously.
Yeah, it, it's got a lot of guidelines. Some will pertain to you, some will, um, that will be for the board to, I guess, to figure out. But, uh, what I'll do is I'll send you, I'll shoot out an email in the morning. Um, give you the, um, the application that they're requesting as well as, um, a letter of authorization. And then I will send you, um, the
You want a smaller copy of this?
The structure site plan review.
More guidelines, just like if we all want a big one.
Criteria that they'll want you to, to, to meet to the best that you can.
Can we get, uh, bigger copies of this with the buildings on it, such as you have instead of the one without it?
I have, uh, I, I can print this up in eleven by seven, this right here, with that, you guys fine with that or you want like a big?
Well, the next version.
Yeah, oh, okay.
You know, would, would be good if we had at least a, I think it, I think in here it says you're supposed to have. You have eight copies of written materials plus eight sets of maps or drawings. So that we all get one, you have one.
You wanna familiarize yourself with that.
Right, yeah. I mean, I, yeah, I think when we came here, we were just kinda, like I said, inching our way forward with things, making sure we're going in the right direction.
Right.
Just for next time, you know?
And then, it sounds like the next step is gonna be where, you know, all this, you know, eight plans and all this other good stuff. Uh, but, uh, engineers, uh, you know, I, I don't, engineer's gonna cost me twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars. I really don't wanna spend that until I have the nod from you guys that, you know, that it's okay to go forward with this. I assume, is that, I mean, that's, is that where we...
Yeah, I mean...
Kind of, kind of depends on what we ask for, because some of the engineering information might be requested by the board, in which case you may have to do it at the same time as you're applying.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds, I mean, it sounds like you, it's, it sounds like we're going in the right, I guess, I guess I wanna get feedback from you. If we're going in the right direction, then yeah, I'll hire these guys. If we're gonna get it done, and I'd rather get it done sooner than later. I just don't wanna get all this done and be like, you know what?
Yeah.
It, it, it's not gonna work for that.
There's nothing glaring that would shut this down.
Okay.
Not, not, not now, but we can't give you the, we can't say yes right now.
I don't know if we have a, like, you asked if you wanna go over the site plan. I don't know if we have the time tonight. Did you wanna have him come back next meeting, um, Chris, Ford, you guys? And then you can really go over it, just before he starts bringing in the engineers?
I think if you read it and then if you have any questions on it, you know, we can help you with that. But I think it would be real wise, when you go home tonight, you can see it, you can find it online, right, Jason?
Yes.
We can get a copy tonight, right? Can't you print it out on tonight?
I mean, if it's online, I mean, I can print it out every day.
But just read it and then just, because this is what we have to look at. This is what we think, what we like, you know?
You could get it in the morning when you come up.
That's what we have to look at. You just have to meet those criteria. Is anything in there that, that does, you know, shows a red flag?
You guys want me to?
Call Jason and ask him.
Is he, is he coming tomorrow for the, if he comes tomorrow?
We're gonna do it regular business hours.
Offer his new application.
I'll send him all that.
You can email it tomorrow.
Process.
Yeah, I'm gonna email it every day in the morning.
Okay, yeah.
You can email it to him.
Are you gonna have electricity in the units?
Not in here, it's just lighting.
Yeah.
No, no electricity, um...
So, are they gonna be, uh, climate controlled, like temperature regulated? How about humidity regulated?
Neither. They're just gonna be regular smoking.
Cold switch.
Cold switch, yeah.
Yeah, because I'm just thinking about fire hazards too.
Yeah, no, we're, we, uh...
No water, no electric, no nothing.
A lot more money than you just...
Right, okay. That simplifies it.
Yeah, yeah. So the only electricity would be, be exterior lighting on the buildings and, you know, and...
Light switching side or, or no?
Uh, no, probably the, uh, yeah.
So Jason will email you the applications tomorrow for site review. And what I would say is when you look at that and you complete it, if you have a question as to whether you wanna proceed with what's asked for in terms of, you know, expensive studies or whatever, then maybe check back with Jason, um, before you do it. Yeah. Yeah.
So we're not out of the realm of...
No, I, I agree with, I, I don't see anything yet that makes me think, oh, this can't work or this isn't gonna work. Yep. I mean, we certainly tell you, because we don't want you to waste money either.
Yeah, no. That would be a bad action.
And, right.
Alright, so, uh, uh...
Take what you get from Jason tomorrow morning, look it over to the office.
Thank you.
Got any questions? Let us know.
Is that his?
Yeah. Pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, thank you guys. Alright.
Alright. New business, uh...
Yeah, it seems like it would be smart if we went over site plan reviews aboard too, maybe at a workshop or sometime, not at the meeting itself. Just so that we're all...
On the up and up?
Yeah, because it is several pages.
Alright.
Alright. Uh, new business, Steven Holt, Holton, okay. Seven, Seventy-four Avenue B, Lot one four six dash zero one two, application of the greatest practical extent.
Thank you very much. Um, evening, so I am Steven Holton, uh, the owner of property Seventy-four Avenue B. Dial, my name is Jeff. We are requesting, um, this application. The, I've had owned the cottage for, um, twenty-two years now. It's, uh, it was built in the early sixties, I believe, so it's, uh, it's almost sixty years old. Um, and we're looking to do renovations, uh, major renovations and, um, uh, but, but staying within this, this footprint, uh, that is currently there.
So the reason, this is, so the reason why he's here is, um, he's doing greater than fifty percent of market value, uh, which requires a plan board review. He is not, um, upgrading his, his intentions are not to upgrade his foundation of his main structure. He's upgrading the foundation on his garage.
Correct.
Um, it is a non-conforming structure to the water as well as to the, um, to the right of way. Avenue B, being Avenue B. He's looking to, like I said, he's looking to upgrade the garage and is looking for his expansion to go upwards.
What weight are we on?
Nelson. Ash, so I will back off a little bit for you, so you can see where he is. Everything is being a little slow tonight, so...
Yeah. So your addition's gonna be on the roadside or how would you? I see it here.
Did it again today.
And it looks like it would be on the upper right-hand corner of the map we just had. Is that correct?
Um, yeah, so it's, so right now there's a main structure, a house, and there's a, um, and a garage. It's really just replacing that, staying in the exact same footprint. So we're gonna keep the foundation, minimize cement and excavation, but we will need to put, uh, we will need to put a, a foundation for the garage.
Is the water down here?
Do you have the...
Yeah.
I know, I was gonna say, if you have the real picture.
I do, I just, I, I'm having trouble with the internet in my computer.
Can anyone?
Oh, nice, yeah.
Yeah, that would help us, that's fine.
Okay, so, we have, um, sorry if I'm not speaking with the microphone.
No.
Uh, so, we have the subplan here. Here is the existing structure. Uh, this is the foundation, uh, to remain.
Yeah.
Uh, this is the foundation, which is CMU and inadequate for a double-story structure, so that will have to be moved. And the plan is to build another, uh, two stories here while maintaining the exact same footprint overall, not adding anywhere, uh, to, to the site, only previously developed footprint is what we're talking about. So the thirty percent expansion form is all in reference to building upward from that footprint. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was just wondering if there was a, a new footprint or not.
No, no new footprint.
Okay.
It's going up, not out.
It's increasing, yeah, volume.
And you're currently seventy-five feet from the lake?
That's what we're doing, alright.
Under a hundred, I know that. Uh, I don't, I don't know the exact number.
Well, we do kinda need a certified plot plan pretty much to determine exactly where it is on the lot. That's something pretty standard to get with these applications, so that we know how far you are from the shore, because that goes into the motion that you will not be any closer than that distance to the water body.
Does the E count, right? E's come, given to it?
Right, the, the overhang counts is part of the bill.
Right.
Where in the ordinance is the section on, um, greatest practical extent?
Couple of them, but it's right in the beginning.
Beginning, yeah.
There's reconstruction and replacement, there's right after, expansion of structures in the shoreline zone.
Did I hear you say greater than thirty percent?
Page six of one oh eight?
Yes.
Yeah, that's where I am.
So the...
Page six of one oh eight.
The maximum...
One four, one one three, I believe.
Whatever ends up being more stringent, whether thirty percent of the area or thirty percent of the volume. And, uh, this is, um, uh, this stays under that thirty percent for both of those numbers, for both the area and the volume. The expansion form has the exact numbers.
Right. I think you're okay with that. We just need to get the, um, the, the exact dimensions of the lot, like your, you know, how far you are from the right of way, how far you are from the lake, the sideline, all those things. Um, and then, because you are replacing almost half of the foundation, right?
That's true.
Um, so we would wanna look at your location, but it, it seems like you, you probably wouldn't be able to move back much because you're...
It's non-conforming.
Non-conforming with the right of way. We just don't have the...
Right. So for, for three... So for, for three reasons, uh, we wanna stay in that, that footprint. One is, uh, it's non-conforming on, on all sides.
Yeah.
And, uh, two is that we want to, um, the, the goal being to reduce non-point source pollution runoff into the lake. Uh, that in mind, uh, most disruptive thing, portion of a building project like this, of a, of a residence is going to be the foundation work.
Yeah.
And, um, so the extent that we can use that existing foundation, we absolutely will. Um, I, I guess my question would be if, um, if we, uh, if we measure from, uh, the body of water to the existing, uh, will that be, um, a, a survey then, or would, would, um, how, how would you like?
Well, I'm trying to figure out, so if we just go like this, which orientation am I in here? Is it like this?
Yes, just like that, yeah.
Okay, now, this deck, is this existing?
That's existing, yeah.
Probably, we have some pictures, Gavin.
Nice, alright. Well, I'm just wondering because the, often we discuss the placement of those footings.
You're just gonna have to bear, for some reason, this wet, the actual site is dragging.
That makes sense, the deck is to the...
There we go.
As long as you get there, that's good.
There's the... Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So, so that garage, um, has a roof which is currently failing. And, um, and is, uh, it's, it's frankly non-conforming to current codes. And so, uh, we're, um, gonna be putting a, a new roof on that, but shedding the water in the same directions. Uh, so off to either, uh, either side of the site.
Yeah.
Uh, so we're not going to change the water flow or the impervious area, um, as a result of this project, but, uh, rebuilding from the found, uh, current foundation footprint up. And that includes the deck. Um, uh, if you scroll through, yeah, you can see the footprint of the deck, the footprint of the deck, um, uh, that, that, that area would also remain unchanged. Uh, the idea is to rebuild that as well.
Well, I think we'd like to establish the location of the footings that hold up the deck, because that would be the closest point to the lake, would probably be this footing. Um, the lower left-hand corner would probably be your closest point to the lake, which is probably a footing. And so we, because those footings may be, um, removed during, um, the work you have done there and then replaced, and we wanna make sure that the...
That's gonna be, um...
Replacement was gonna be in the same location.
Yeah, and, okay, yeah.
Twenty-two feet.
It's gonna be, I thought you were saying something else, which would, if they were replacing the footings, it's gonna be a permit by the DEP anyway.
Well, I just wanna make sure it's in the same place or further from the lake.
Twenty-two feet.
What I'm, a rough guesstimate with, uh, the tax map is, it's saying it's between twenty-two, twenty and twenty-five feet. Let's go with that.
Twenty-five.
And what's the width of the existing deck? Off the building, cuz we could use that as one of our, um, determinations to make sure that the deck wasn't created larger than it is existing by giving the dimensions existent and then just...
I have a...
Ten.
Uh, it must be twenty-four feet because it's ten by, it says two hundred and forty.
Yeah.
So it's gotta be ten by twenty-four.
So the footings would be ten feet off the existing foundation?
Uh, approximately unless it's, the deck is cantilevering, um...
Right, it could be somewhat, maybe.
Uh, second.
It's right at the end, it's not, I mean, it's, the footings are at the end of the deck.
Yeah, they're, they're right at the, yeah.
That's about eight feet.
Well, usually we do, do ask for a surveyed plot plan to identify that point, I mean, it's, we've kinda made it a standard thing that we do. We are kinda having a hard time coming up with a distance. You have a lot of retaining walls in the front of the place?
Um, yes.
Yeah. You don't propose any changes of those?
Um, no, I don't, I don't, I don't believe so. I was thinking, I mean, I, it's, the, the landscape in there are retaining walls to, for water runoff protection.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, but they're, they're all, they're in bad shape.
They are in bad shape.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that is a separate permit you'd have to get anywhere.
Yeah, I think I'll need a separate.
And that's not, we're not, that's not to this, we're talking about the structure, I would say, right now, I mean, I know it's...
Well, often we talk about when the site is worked like that, where they're gonna have machines on every side of the building.
Yeah, you still have...
Potentially take it down, we talked about the revegetation plan, and the front of the building often needs to be revegetation done that we ask the applicant to agree to in, during this process. I don't know, I guess it, you know, it's, it's up to the board to, to to decide if they feel like we have enough information to move on this thing.
Do we know if the garage was part of the original structure? When was it built?
It was, it was added on in, in the eighties of some ti- it was before, it was added on prior to nineteen eighty-nine.
Okay.
So our ordinance references nineteen eighty-nine as a structure.
Yeah, that's why I was asking, yeah, thank you.
Well, it's just, we, it's just something we do for everyone.
Right.
If I, if I made a thing that we're hoping most for, um, is to, as, uh, this is in conceptual design at this point, and we can provide more information as we go through design, but if we have, um, chances, that's, um, uh, that everything that we have submitted so far looks in line and is, uh, agreeable, you don't see any objection to the that information submitted so far, that can allow us to move forward with confidence and provide more information as needed. Uh, if, if that makes sense.
Yeah, you're just looking for, you're looking for measurements so that when you make your motion, you can, yeah, but, okay.
Yeah.
What, um, what's the surface under the deck?
Concrete.
So there's a concrete pad under there. Does it extend, um, beyond the footings?
No. It...
It's pretty much, it does.
At the footings, right.
And do you have a, like a walk-in basement there?
Yep.
Yeah, I kinda see it in the very far, bottom left there, it looks like there is some pretty hard surface right there.
Yes, that's a stone walkway, um...
Yeah.
Like slate, or is it gravel?
It's, it's, it's for the water pretty much.
That's just so pavers.
Yeah, yeah.
We look at impervious surf, surface, that's what Gavin's talking about.
Would you be willing to replace that concrete?
Well, that comes out further than the deck though, doesn't it?
With impervious pavers instead?
What's in the front?
Um...
Is, are there plans to remove that?
Yeah.
I wish measured that.
Yeah, uh, do you want to measure from the front of it?
No, we're no plans to...
See where the green moss is? Or, I think it's moss, right? That sticks out further, that sticks out further than the deck.
Right, but what is that, though?
That's, that's part of the concrete pad.
It is, it's not pavers.
I think the pavers are walking up to the stairs.
Right, did you, did you leave that picture?
Yeah, it's, the concrete extends further out.
It does in this, in this picture too.
Yeah.
Could we see that?
Right.
So it's like, it's concrete for, okay, so that's, you know, that's not part of the, whatever it's like...
Where the moss is, it's not, where the moss is in that picture, that's just concrete pavers?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's the walkway, and that's...
We can get a better picture.
Yeah, it's hard to tell, it looks like, it looks like it's part of the apron.
Right, right.
So...
Well, it may require a site walk, where we go out and look for ourselves anyway. That's what they decide to do.
My site walk still wouldn't get us our...
Measurements.
Measurement, though.
Yeah, the tape measure would.
Yeah, but we're not, I mean...
Every tape measure's different. At least by a couple sixteen.
I think Gavin's more concerned of the high watermark.
Right.
Unless you know where that actual mark is, you don't get an accurate reading. If he's looking to make a motion, he wants that reading.
Yeah, spring's a bad time for that.
Yeah.
Well, it doesn't change.
Well, I think you're more concerned too
I mean, I...
The size of the, the deck, if that was gonna change, if we get the measurement off the deck, that keeps them honest on the deck.
Right, but we're not... We're not the ones who make that numerical delineation.
Right.
The, um, now, if, would you be comfortable if, without ha- having, cuz it, who knows how long it would take him to get a surveyor out there?
I know.
If he printed up this map and gave you the calculations, you know, from this corner to there, you know, from this corner to here, this corner to here, you know, or whatever the closest, you would want the closest point.
Yeah, right there.
You wanna know what this measurement is from, from where the high water is right now.
Yeah.
To the act of that, and if, so if, I'll send this, I can... Or you can go online and get, and whatnot, and print this up, and then give this to the planning board.
Yeah, to the edge of the con, uh, concrete, cuz the concrete stays out further than the deck.
And so that includes the walkway?
Yeah, if you can tell the difference between the two, you know, measurement to the walkway
Walkways.
measurement to the concrete pad.
From where the water is today, I mean?
It'll be pretty close.
You don't wanna wait till Saturday when we get all that other rain, it'll work against ya.
High watermark, if you know where that is, cuz...
You'll be able to see it.
You'll be able to tell.
It'll be on your wall, is it a wall or a beachfront?
I think it's a beach.
Beach.
Did you usually get that little cutout that tells you kinda where your high watermark is?
Okay.
What's high watermark is, is high as the lake, whatever it's called.
Pavers.
So the highest, you can go, yeah, I know where that, I know where that is, I mean, but then it's been two years.
Pretty, pretty much, yeah.
Pavers are moving anyways.
Hell, where it is, but...
Except for that one year where the lake went up...
Concrete's not about structure anyway.
Right.
The footing.
It's like a loom pond, I mean, we had that one rainstorm.
All the docks.
Or the edge of the dock.
Oh, last, yeah, last fall.
That's gotta hang over.
Oh, no, in the stairwell.
I know, that's the thing.
Would you be willing to replace that, uh, concrete pad with something that is pervious, or?
Um, I, I just don't know what we, you know, should be, the pad, the, the deck, I just don't know what kind of disruption that would be. I'm not really very into that at all. The foundations of those posts are gonna require a little bit more investigation.
Yeah.
Um, because as it stands right now, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure that those posts are resting on anything other than that pad.
Yeah.
And so, uh, I, I think that if, uh, the pad comes out, it could easily be replaced as long as the post remains supported by, um, by a tier of some sort, uh, by a post foundation.
Yeah.
It would just be a sonnet tube, uh, kind of foundation, uh, some, something of that sort. Uh, so that would've, that would free up the area underneath, is my point, and I think that's what you're getting at.
Right, just water coming through the deck would go into the ground as opposed to runoff of the pad.
Hmm, I forgot all about this guy, I'm sorry.
Well, that would be nice.
Oh, doesn't matter, you got too many trees, I thought you cut some down.
Are we supposed to have, um, any kind of proof of ownership on this? A deed or anything?
You want me to go down there, I can get you, present you with the deed that's in this thing.
No, I just...
I think just the land use offices are, I mean, and...
That's, yeah, that's, that's...
We're kinda limited on what we do with these particular applications.
Okay, I just didn't wanna...
But I, I don't know, I mean...
I think we just went over that a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, he's, he's fine.
Didn't we?
Yes, we did. Uh, but if you would like to see what the tax map says, it'll show you his name.
Do you own the building yourself? Or is it owned jointly with anyone?
No, you know, I'm like, I'm married, my wife, my wife's not on the, on the deed.
Okay.
Might be a smart move, not just to get...
She's like, why am I not?
Exactly, you realize this is all recorded, so your responses are really important.
So you have owner number two is, is Steven Holton, and this is just for tax information, owner number three is Anne Marie.
Two.
Two.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
So she is.
She is, okay.
Now, you're gonna lose that, no?
She's on tax.
I'll remove your address quickly so people don't, so Jason can handle it now.
So, uh, if the existing foundation is kept, um, and we have measurements of, of the pad extent from an existing foundation, I'm, I'm just thinking about the water moving as, as we've been talking about here, and the survey and how that's determined, and, uh, how we get a point that doesn't move, uh, to measure from, and if that existing foundation is kept, could that be the point that doesn't move?
It could be, it's, it's not the way we usually do it.
Just a thought.
So I, I guess my question is, so he's not planning on removing, he's not planning on moving the main structure, which is the closest to the water, and he's not planning on removing the deck, the size of the deck?
But no, you are planning on removing it.
He's replacing the deck.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
So as long as I keep it at the, whatever, ten by twenty-four?
Right.
Right.
Which would be a permit to my office as a, a, you know, um, same size, same, same location, um, so not moving the same, so back to where he's not moving the size of the structure, he's not moving the deck, why wouldn't it just stay where, you know, motion to not approach, encroach on any more, not in motion, but, you know what I'm saying, why wouldn't you just say you're not encroaching any of your, your setbacks, any greater than what they are?
The only thing he's doing is adding some square footage, but it's going...
Right, but that's behind, that's behind the, the closest point.
Yeah, but it's going straight up too, and it's not...
And I'm, I'm just curious, I'm just, that's just an afterthought, I'm just, you know...
We just usually delineate the closest point. It's like part of the process.
Yeah, that's fine.
We just wanna make sure that when the deck's rebuilt, it would be in the same location, which we don't know what that location is.
Okay.
I mean, it's kinda...
Yeah, no, I know what you're saying, I, 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 I...
Yeah, I think we're on the same page, I'm not sure.
Does raising this building, um, affect anyone else's view of the water?
He does, if, he's allowed to go up, if, he's allowed thirty-five feet. If, if, if his expansion, he's allowed, if, if it doesn't obviously meet that criteria, cuz you don't have enough, but he's, he would be allowed no greater than thirty-five feet of an expansion upward, so, um...
Uh, for what it's worth, um, it is the lowest slope roofs and the, the lowest height on that padded floor that you can possibly do, and that was, um, not, not because I'm mean as a designer, but because we wanna get under that thirty percent volume capulation, and already that garage is such a low slope roof, pretty much as soon as you make that roof to code, we already have that thirty percent.
Right.
Uh-huh.
For what it's worth. But we're, we're infringing on the views, I think, as little as possible.
You're only adding a small dormer to the, to the main structure is what, what's going on?
Well, the best way to permanently mark the longest distance from the house for your porch is the distance from the foundation to that post.
Really is.
Doesn't go any further. And, of course, the distance from the water to your post is the variable, because water changes, but if you're ten feet out now, that's where it's gotta be when you're done. Makes sense, you know, that's the only permanent way to measure it.
And how far is it to the road?
So we do, obviously, you know, we do the center.
Yeah.
So, just say thir-, say approximately thirty, thirty-two to thirty, uh, thirty to thirty-five feet.
Yeah.
That doesn't meet our fifty feet.
Fifty feet, yeah. Yeah. It does not look like he's encroaching on the sideline.
No.
The neighbor, he's fine with the neighbor.
Yeah, there is a septic system on the north side of that site, uh, that's recent build, and, um, uh, so.
It's over in here, right?
Yeah, that's right, and, uh, so, um, with, without, we, we couldn't move north without disturbing that, when you're building that.
Well, and the deed, and when we built it, it was all, we already needed, uh, a variance, because up in the, uh, just beyond that is my neighbor's, um, well.
Right.
A little bit higher, you know, we are right about there, but on the property.
And those things, things that would be on the certified plan.
Are you saying proper procedure is to have that, that certified plan before we can move forward?
I believe so.
I feel like you guys have done one since I've been here that didn't have certified plans, I'll double check, but. I think, I mean.
I don't know which.
I think some of the ones that, uh, Lake Lemon Consulting had done, didn't have, uh.
He gave us measurements, but it may not have been a certified plan.
Yeah, I think it was something like this that had measurements on it, but I don't think it was an actual survey. I'll double check, I, I'm just not sure, I don't, I haven't actually come across anything where it says that it actually requires.
Right.
A certified, uh, a stamp of approval from a.
Right.
Civil, you know?
Cause it is hard, cause the whole left side of the building, the foundation's gonna be replaced. That whole left side could slide to the north theoretically and not, not be imposing on the other setbacks, but we don't know how far it is to the septic or how far it is to the well.
I have, I have a septic plan in, in this folder downstairs, if you really wanna know some measurements. Might even give you a measurement to the lake, I doubt it, but, and I can run down and grab it if you want me to.
Well, and that's just information that we usually.
Yeah.
Take into account.
When was your septic replaced?
Two summers ago, so.
Well. Do you have the septic plan?
Unfortunately, it's on my phone.
You wanna see it, you can email it to me.
Oh.
It'll take about ten minutes, the way my computer's running right now, but.
It was, uh.
It's public information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Delete all your physics homework, you'll get most speed on your computer. Delete all the physics homework, you'll get most speed.
They make it really hard on you.
I mean, I agree, we usually do have some measurements.
Yeah.
Acton MA.
But it's true that what we've been getting from.
They live in.
May not be certified.
Right, but we, he did have measurements, so.
Right.
What's that? Um, Tyler, you're talking about.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that he didn't have measurements.
No, we had measures, we just don't know if they were certified.
Right.
Did you buy this property in December of two thousand?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay, so it is jointly, I just went to the registry deeds, and it is jointly held by you and your wife.
Okay.
So she should be an applicant or sign over, give you agency to conduct business.
Need that for this, it doesn't need both. You, this is.
I'm not saying that I wouldn't vote to approve something, but she is an owner of that property. In my opinion, if everyone else disagrees, so be it.
Could appear on the form.
Just then, I would say if it did, it would be just under owner information, doesn't have to be point of contact, contact.
Correct.
Owner information.
What is it that you want?
Mortgage, there's, uh, she's not, or something.
She's on the, she's on the deed itself.
Okay.
It's on the taxing too, so.
So, what is it that you want to accomplish tonight? What is it you're asking us to do?
Well, the septic claim would probably be.
Twenty-two feet.
Yeah.
The fact that we're going to be staying in the same.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, it's hard to tell, but is that from the front of their deck or the concrete pad? That's the, but do you wanna go by the deck or you wanna by the concrete pad?
Okay.
I think I'd go by the actual.
So.
Foundation wall and then the measurement to the.
Yeah, I think that's.
Front of the concrete pad.
I think that's a good one, that, that Devin came up with.
So the reason I ask that question is, again, I don't have any problem addressing that tonight and just saying it's subject to the application being updated to include your wife as an owner.
Right, sure.
That's all, I'm not trying to put a.
Yeah, no, it is something we have to pay more attention to in the future.
In other words, no glaring stoppers, so far. So.
Well, I just think it's interesting too, it's required documentation in this list.
Right.
And, like, why?
But as I said, the devil's in the details.
We had photos, we brought them up.
So what are we doing right now?
We are probably gonna make them, unless people think that we do wanna certify.
You wanna get that information from, right?
Block plan, we're, we're gonna either do that, or we're gonna make a motion to using the existing foundation as a point of reference um, from that, whatever would be south. That lakeside corner, whichever, would it be the?
Uh, south, southern.
Southwest corner?
Yeah.
So it'd be.
Right.
There it is, twenty-two feet, yeah.
That's to the, that's to the concrete pad, or is that to the, just the actual deck?
We just asked that, the answer was we.
I was trying to refresh these many.
Well, it would line up with when you were doing the other one.
Right, so it'd be the deck.
So that's gotta be to the corner, well, that is the corner of the deck, cause you can see where it crops out, the twenty-two feet to that left.
So if we measure by the wire, and then, um, when the jack comes, uh, when it's built, and then, even though we built it in the same place.
High water, high watermark is not a definite thing.
It fluctuates, I, I, I understand that it does. If, it's not gonna fluctuate from twenty-two feet to fourteen feet though, so.
One thing that's not gonna move is the foundation, so, you know, it's.
Well, that, that lines up with your.
Yeah. My. Twenty-two point one, three or something.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
And, and the tax maps aren't generally a hundred percent accurate, so.
And what, what is, this is the septic design right here?
This is the septic design, and I can go up and it'll, so this is his field.
So how far is the septic from the lake?
So the septic is eighty-seven, the field is eighty-seven feet.
Yeah.
From the lake, uh, the tank is, uh, fif-
It's fifty feet to my well.
Yeah.
There's no room to move that.
A well point, yeah.
No reason.
Yeah, he's got a vari- he's got a variance on the, the guy's, the, the other property's, uh, septic being at sixty-two feet as well, he's.
Yeah, yeah. No, I was just trying to get another distance to, to use as determination, but, um, I think we can go with the twenty-two feet. Unless anybody sees anything.
Someone's followed with it?
Yeah, I think so, I mean.
Everything else is just gonna be up to code.
Right, yeah, we don't really cover much else.
Yeah.
We just had to kinda dig around until we got that number and.
Nothing's really gonna change, except for the height.
Do you wanna make the motion, Gavin?
Sure.
He's looking at something else.
Seems like you're the best versed on the measurement.
Yeah, yeah, I was just waiting for Jason to, I'm not sure what he's doing, but.
Oh, no, go right ahead, I'm not doing anything.
Oh, you can do it something.
I was looking for actual his, I was looking at something else.
You thought I'd stay.
Yeah, yeah, I thought you stayed with the other doctors together.
No.
We usually get the number of the leak and stuff, that's what, just hung up on that.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion that we accept the application for greatest practical extent from Stephen Holton, seventy-four Avenue B, that his structure be located no closer than twenty-two feet from the high watermark, that the cement pad under the existing deck be replaced with pervious material of his choosing, and that the, all the owners' names are presented on the application form.
Would you consider the language on the replacing, the replacement materials, that that be if practical or something to that effect? Or are you insisting that that be done, no matter what?
They, I feel like they agreed to it.
It was a concern about the footers for the deck being a part of that.
Well, I feel like they're gonna be replacing those footers anyway, what do you think? You're not sure, cause you want to look at the, you want to actually look at the condition of the footing, given.
If, there's a possibility that it's a proper mat slab, that those posts are legitimately bearing on, I see no signs of damage or cracking, so it could be the case, but I do know that sometimes, uh, people put posts on all kinds of slabs and think it's not when it's not.
Well, didn't want it in a picture that was clear.
What's that?
How old do you think the slab is?
More than, more than twenty-two years, I can tell you that, it was well there before I got it.
Alright, so I'll, I'll amend my motion to include that when looking at the footings of the deck, if the, if it's found that the footings are, need to be replaced, that at that time, the cement pad existent, which, I wish I had the size, uh, twenty-four by ten about, be replaced with pervious material.
Right, I'll second that, thank you.
All in favor? Or nothing?
Thank you very much.
Right, sorry about the wait.
Yeah.
Thank you for all.
No, but you're all set with, you can give them the new guy.
Yeah.
What was that, what's that, you can vote? We have a quorum now.
Right, but it's not five people, so he gets to vote, he's drawn out here.
Okay, yeah, I understand.
Uh, so he just needs a revised.
Yeah, just under the owner information, I, point of contact can stay him, right, just under owner information, that.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you wanna, if you don't, she can, you're gonna have to answer to her now anyways.
Keep everybody happy?
Yeah, I think that, that was the only hung up, right, kinda.
That was all that I saw, yeah, and I just, you know, I think we need to be consistent with that.
No, I agree, no.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
I just added more people on, I've always said if I'm assassinated, there would be reasonable doubt, cause there would be so many people that would want to, and now I've probably added two more, minimum.
Yeah, why am I feeling? We need, we need, uh, more vigil aids with these things.
Yeah, uh, we also have, um, this is, nothing's set in stone, I've been in contact with, uh,
North Star as well as, uh, Southern Maine Regional Plan Development Commission, uh, to hold a workshop for the planning board, or myself, for, um, what we do, how, how we present ourselves, how we, what the planning board's authorities are, what my, where my role is, Chris's role as chairman, as well as regular planning boards, I kinda feel that I'm gonna go more towards Southern Maine Regional Planning, because I feel if we're gonna use North Star, I don't feel that they should be, I'd just rather have another entity in here explaining. Yeah, third party, I don't, you know, you know what, yeah, kinda like a conflict of interest, so, I've got their proposal, but I think, I've been in cont- I've been in communications with, um, one of the directors over there at the Southern Maine, so I just, I just feel that I don't wanna, yeah.
No, those.
If you understand where I'm coming from with, with doing that, um, and.
It would be something where they'd come to one of our regular meetings or.
If we have, if we have time, I wanna do it, like I expressed to, um, both the, both parties, is I'd like to do it as soon as possible, um, but.
Would you do it at a workshop time?
I had pretty much told them, uh, uh, it would be a, we can do a workshop on a Thursday, or another planning board meeting. Uh, I know, like, the Southern Maine, um, is busy pretty much Mondays through Wednesday, the guy that would really do it, so he said Thursday's really worked best for him.
Oh.
And he'd like to break it up into two sessions, just so we don't get overwhelmed and bored, and, 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 you know, just too much overload of information.
So this is different from a Zoom?
Yeah, he's coming, it's gonna be in person.
Yeah, that'll be better.
He said he can do it in Zoom too.
Yeah, we did one.
It was vague, though.
He said he can do it in Zoom, but I just think you'd get more out of it in person.
Yeah.
And you can ask questions much more easily and.
Just see MMA offer this.
Yeah, I went to MMA training.
He's gonna tailor it towards, he's gonna tailor it to what Acton requires, so it's gonna, it's gonna include site plan review, it's gonna include conditional, um, use. I'll be thinking that we, we're, you know, things that we're dealing with.
The reason I asked was just wanted to might be like on, if he does it on Thursday.
I would say it'd be a couple hours.
We just come in a couple hours early, and we have a long day, but.
Well, I would try to, uh, you know, I would, if, it would be on a, a workshop, or on an off week, so that we don't actually, we don't entertain.
Um, and you don't have that in the meeting.
Yeah, we're not gonna entertain any other, anything other than what, that meeting, what we're scheduling.
On off, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, it wouldn't, it wouldn't.
That work.
We wouldn't have to fight against, do we have enough time? It'd be more or less, okay, we're here for this, and, you know.
Well, it just, it just, you know, if we had two hours of workshop before the meeting, it would just affect our performance at the meeting.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
No, I agree, I think it'd be.
It would wanna be brain fried.
Right. So I mean, I, I think I'd like to shoot for somewheres in April, end of April, maybe, if, or middle of, I don't even know.
Trote season's coming, buddy.
What's up?
I said trote season's coming.
Well, one thing that occurs to me is, um, I don't know where everyone's terms are, and if there's gonna be a change, say in June, that maybe we should wait and do it if there are new people seated, just a thought.
I don't, yeah.
I have two to go.
What's up?
I have two to go.
Two years.
Mm-hmm.
Gavin's probably been expired for like four, five years.
Yeah, when I, when I first.
He wants his red staple of that.
Do it every six months, and then it seems like I haven't done it for years now.
So, just a thought.
I can't remember when I.
Does Selectmen keep track of that?
I forgot.
Well, they had, they had me swearing in, like, to Selectmen at the very beginning, they had me swearing in, like, every, I had to do it three times, and then, like, just, cause if I didn't swear in, then they said I couldn't participate, and it's like, took a little while, but I haven't had to do it for a while, I'd do it again.
It's not going anywhere, you're not allowed to.
Yeah. Alright.
We need ladies here, time to go home.
Almost. I guess we're just, all we've got left is, um, determining um, goals for the workshop or something like that, right? I mean, we know we have the workshop scheduled.
Yeah.
Right.
I took a quick look at the residential rental units and Attorney Lankowski's comments. Um, one, two, page three. Um, some of these, uh, and I don't disagree with.
Some are just opinions and.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with his opinions, um, and so I would encourage everyone to take a quick look at that, because if you two agree with his opinion, I don't foresee getting this remedied in time to put it on this year. I don't foresee getting this remedied in time to put it on this year, because, for example, item H.
Well, let's just start the beginning, maybe. Or just run through all of them?
Fine with me.
So.
Do we have another copy of last one?
I don't even, come on, I don't even have a copy, cause I gave you mine.
No, you didn't. I mean, that's my paper.
Probably the one that's, oh, got an ear tab written, you're probably still looking at it right now.
So, he's got nothing on the first two pages, right?
No, he just went over the.
That's why I went to the third page.
Yeah. Okay, so.
I was getting organized, Pat, to make some sort of note in.
Oh, what, you wanted to leave?
No, someone has given you the eyes.
So A.
Yeah.
Owners of residential rental units in active maintenance registered said units with the town's code enforcement officer by December thirty-first, twenty-two, or within thirty days of first holding the property out for rental, or renting the property thereafter, whichever comes first. From our discussion, I understand that A intends to set a separate deadline for owners of existing rental units. That's really not clear from the language used. I suggest something like the following, owners of rental units existing on the effective date of this amendment shall register yet said units with the town's code enforcement officer on or before December thirty-first, twenty-two. All of the running two units must be registered with the town's code enforcement officer in thirty days of the date said units are first offered for rent.
So I would say that is something we could deal with in a workshop.
So you agree with what he's saying?
For the purposes of tonight's discussion, I, I believe there are some of these, as we go down further, that probably are not something we can simply deal with in a workshop next week.
Okay.
So that's what I was trying to focus on, um.
So, and then, B, he's fine with, C?
C could be addressed in a workshop.
E could be.
I suggest the sub paragraph E end in the word equivalent. And we don't even say that the fire department deals with it.
Right.
It's just.
It's more Jason, it's more Jason.
I mentioned putting in, like, even just the fire department and the CEO, and then we would, I think the board was trying to not make more work on my plate in a sense.
Doesn't the fire chief have? Have, d- doesn't he follow the same code or not?
I don't know if he does. I mean, I, I'm the one who goes in and does the, the inspections for, make sure they're using the right egress windows. I don't know, I don't think.
Unless he's a builder, he wouldn't know what the building code is per se.
Commercial, a commercial building, a fire marshal will go in and, and review, um, all the codes and stuff like that, but where these are, I guess, residential rental units, it wouldn't require a fire marshal.
Right, but we were trying to get it out of your.
Right, and I, and I, I understand that, I appreciate that, but I think what Attorney Lankowski was stating is that it's not required by the, you know, to, to make sure something's to code, is the key word right there.
Equivalent too ultimately is different levels of training that they go through and are certified as fire.
Have the document.
Wanna look at my copy?
No, I'm gonna just shut this offline and then go on.
So.
Well, I just know this is one that we really battled with the public on.
Correct. And I think if we end it after the word equivalent, that then we're back to the issue of egress windows potentially, in terms of code. Because we were talking about relaxing it.
Yeah.
And now if we take out that someone's gonna determine whether it's code compliant egress or equivalent, who makes that determination and under what criteria?
Well, if it's, if you're, if you're going by code, if you're saying, if you, if you're recommending something to be to code, that'd be CE, that'd be my department.
Now, to date, do you have to be involved with this at all, to date?
Huh?
So far.
There's, is there anything like this to date?
No, there's not much of your involvement so far in the rentals.
Well, code compliant.
No, but when you start putting in the words code compliant, that, then it does require my review.
So far, so far, we've kind of kept you out of this.
Yeah.
We're gonna bring you back in.
One, if we could just look at H for a minute.
Yeah.
We can't leave this determination to an official's discretion. There has to be a standard which is uniformly applied. How are we gonna get that standard done in time to present this? That's my biggest question.
Well, we could just wipe H right off the, off the plate, and we don't say anything about maximum occupancy.
There you go.
And isn't that one of the major concerns?
Well, it was for septics.
I think that the septic, if we get the septic, state inspected, septic in use, or however we newly terminology. I think we get them with a new septic, we're gonna be better off than than throwing the whole thing out for this.
Nobody hasn't found any re, any source of who determines that maximum thing. It's a matter of guesswork. There's no code that has that requirement. The only code these people occupy can see at all is like the size of the.
But I think when they brought this up, the maximum occupancy was more fire concerning and overloading the septic.
Exactly. So if you take it out, then you have nothing related to the fire safety concern of people owning it up.
Need to be concerned about.
What's that?
Well, they could put forty people in a small camp, and then, then what?
They do that, they do that. They're gonna do that anyway.
Okay, well, if you think it's workable in a workshop, then.
How does the fire marshal determine the maximum occupancy? The rule of thumb is, and I've never, I've, I've never done this, so I'm, I'm just looking it up, quick Google search. Rule of thumb is determining maximum oc- occupancy is a simple formula by multiplying the room's width by the length in feet. The answer can be divided by thirty-six to arrive to the basic occupancy figure. That comes from the fire marshal, uh.
Or I could go to the United States Army Code for, depending on your rank, how much space you get. You know, I mean.
Right. Wait, so, so.
So we could put that formula in if somebody is really feels strongly about keeping it?
Length times width divided by thirty-six.
Okay, so let me write that down.
So what is the general size of, of a building?
Of the room?
They're all gonna be different. I mean, you have some of these places.
Twenty by thirty, right?
A rough estimate, yeah, so.
So six hundred?
Divided by thirty-six.
Divided by thirty-six.
Right.
Well, how much square footage is one person supposed to be allowed?
Well, depends the size of the person.
Yeah, it doesn't make much, if you.
Cause that math is weird.
Yeah, I mean, it puts it at sixty people.
I, I have to, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's gonna, hello?
Yeah, no, that's fine, I just.
That's gonna take some time.
I wanted to get a direct, a direction on both of these ordinance features.
Footage determines how many people can occupy that space.
Yeah, you can go a few if you want.
I think this one's, yeah.
Sorry, goodnight.
Goodnight, Pat, thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
See you later.
I think that's all the way you're gonna be able to do it. The square footage determines how many people can occupy. That's definitive. That's easy to, to.
Well, that doesn't, but what we just.
This arbitrary.
What was the answer?
But what we just.
Why do you think you got too many?
Pretty much rounded up to seventeen people.
Seventeen people?
In a six hundred square foot room.
It just doesn't make sense.
No, it doesn't to me either. That's why I was kind of like, you're not gonna like the sounds of this.
How do they set the occupancy for this building? There's only so many people allowed.
I think a hundred in just this area, right?
I think it's like the floor structure.
We're not sleeping here either, but.
Thank goodness.
I just.
I'm just saying, if there's some formula out there for figuring that out, then it's definitive.
Didn't you find one, Jason, before this?
What's that?
Didn't you find like a, a set, uh, floor plan in math? In American Housing, something?
Well, we could ask the Ricky, right?
Yeah, I did, I did. He said he had a, he actually had a pro, there was a program for it, whether.
Well, cause we could put using X and Y Z program as a stipulation of the, you know, maximum occupancy of each rental unit shall be determined by the, whoever we want, CEO or the, I mean, I think the fire department's fine, chief of the active fire department, using X, Y, and Z program.
You know, I, I just think that, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm fine with it. These aren't gonna, we're not gonna get flooded every, all the time with these things. I'm gonna get hit with a, a swarm of them all at once, and then it, they'll trickle in every once in a while. So I mean, you plan a day or two of just going out and running these things, and, you know.
Right, and you just have to schedule them, and they can't expect you to get there right away.
Right, yeah, I would be like, okay, I can get here, I'm gonna do these on these days, you know, so if, if it falls back on me, then I'm, I'm fine with that. So don't feel that you're putting more work on me, or if you want this in there.
Well, I do feel like there are more, more important things we need to be doing.
We do a reinspection after two or three years, then?
What's that?
We wanna move this to the workshop as well.
I would, yeah, if people think this can be corrected in a workshop, or, then, then do that.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Okay, and then the was, Pat's not here, John's not here, but we still have to figure out if we're gonna try and put the solar thing forward now that we, our muddled vote has been.
Saying it's going forward, is it?
Well, I really think to put it forward, we would have had to make a second motion and vote again, honestly, but I understand what was said at the previous conversation.
I think John should be involved in that.
I know, but.
But he's not around, and they're looking for, um.
And he's not gonna be able to make the workshop date. Which I know Bernard, you're.
Not gonna be.
Would you attend the workshop to talk about the rentals?
Then you could leave after.
No, I mean, I'm starting to feel like Bernard, where we're just, we're, we're kind of going on with this for too long, and I'm kind of losing stamina with the whole thing.
Yeah. You're saying for yourself, or you're asking me?
I was saying for myself, but also that, that possibly how you were feeling as well.
Yeah. I, I feel that I have put what time I care to. Um, I do not believe that, yes, could some of this, like as to residential rentals, with some more work, where are the standards gonna come from? Are you gonna articulate it? And then the next question is, are people gonna vote for that? And I don't believe they are. Once you get into so many per square feet and this and that, I don't think they're gonna do it.
You're talking residential, or are you talking solar?
Residential rental units. Um, so I just really don't wanna continue to.
You thinking of scrapping the residential?
Put time in, um, you know, I will. Well, here's what I would say. I mean, I, I wanna, you know, be a team player, I don't wanna be a jerk. If you want me to come to the workshop to work on this, I will do that. What I will not do going forward is, you're going to have to have someone else that's going to go more in finance and speak at the town meeting and try and sell it, because I'm not standing up to have eggs and tomatoes thrown at me.
Yeah, no, I, I presented these at the town meeting last year.
Because I.
I don't mind doing, doing some of that.
Don't think it's gonna fly, um, so.
I would be fine, fine with presenting them at town meeting, um.
Yeah.
Now, Warren Finance is yet to be determined, cause I don't really know what I'm gonna be doing it Monday at six o'clock right now, but.
Yeah.
Um. Okay.
So if that's the consensus, that you want to do a workshop on these, yes, I will attend, and yes, I will participate, although my preference would be to let those who wanna do it, do it, and then of course I'll be dealing with it as a board member the next night anyway. But. So, who else? We don't know if Pat can be there Wednesday, or do we?
She didn't say anything. She knows about it. Well, I could reach out to her, or we could, we.
Cause now I don't, you know, I, what I ideally don't wanna do is end up back where we've been before, where Jen schedules, and then it gets canceled.
Right.
Gavin, are you gonna attend?
Yep, I can.
Gavin?
So we can get, get some definitive.
I'll try. I mean, it's, it's honestly, it's hard to know, because it's a, you don't know what you're doing on the day.
Four o'clock, Wednesday four.
Yeah, I'll try and get there, yeah. I mean, I can say yes, but it's you know, sometimes it's hard to get there.
And that, don't forget, that gives us a two-hour window, cause the, the Select.
No, we're gonna have it downstairs.
Oh, correct, okay. So, and who is going to do the legwork in advance of that meeting to speak to the chief and get the appropriate criteria that we would incorporate?
I would put that on the CEO.
So you wanna know what?
Yeah.
So let's.
Kind of looking.
You know, like.
And that's kind of what we were just trying to muddle through, what we need to get for that workshop.
One big thing that we need from you, or the fire department, what definitive mechanism do you use to determine occupancy of a, of a room?
Correct.
If there is a formula, a program, a something.
Yeah.
Where it's definitive.
Like a national fire safety standard or whatever.
Ten by ten, the army has this, depending on your rank. If, you get a ten by ten room if you're E six or above, so on and so forth. So if you got a hundred foot square feet, how many people can live in that space is what we need, I think. That would help a lot with that one thing. As far as the law, where he showed that it's against the law for us to post things. All that's, that's a no-brainer. If it's against the law, we can't do it, right?
That doesn't make sense, though.
I, I know, because I've seen these other places. I mean, hotels and motels and.
I think you, if you, if you want to present it, you, you can, but I don't know, I think what he's saying is not a mandatory thing. If, if the owner says, I'm not posting that, then he doesn't physically have, he doesn't have to, but I think that's what he was kind of saying.
So it's one of those ask?
Uh, well, prohibit.
You can ask, and if they do it, they do it. If they don't, then they don't have to, you know.
Yeah, we can set out a guideline saying we ask.
I would, the way I would do it is the way the attorney's recommending, that just post that the renter can request to see it.
Right.
Well, I feel like we still need to get the property's E nine-one-one address.
Oh, yeah, those, yeah, the only thing.
Just the permit.
It's just the permit.
That we're talking about.
And so, it can just inform them, if they'd like to see the permit, they have the right to request it.
Yeah.
The other information, we can post.
I can look at this, it's more deep in depth.
Yeah.
Got some time. I do computer research anyway, so I'll go through that, and if there's anything I can glean out of it, I'll bring it to the workshop. I think that one thing about occupancy has to be a formula, so anybody can figure it out, not just proprietary. Yeah, if your family's all weigh three hundred pounders, then you can only have three. But if they're all skinny as rails, you can have five. Who's gonna determine that without a formula? There's gotta be one. They figure out maximum occupancy for hotel rooms in rooms like this, how do they figure that? That's what we need, right? A definitive.
Yeah.
Right.
That just seems to me like.
Alright, so, Chris, you don't know if you're coming?
No, I, I'll have, I'll have a better chance of attending this one.
At four.
Yeah.
Cause it's four o'clock.
Well, that and I'm closer to, like, to act at this time around.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's the, you know, the last ones, I'm in Windows, so. So I'm in Sanford, I believe, as of now, Wednesday, so.
Okay. Alright, Wednesday at four.
Alright, we'll just.
And then we have planning board the next night?
Yes.
Yeah, so if any changes are made, and we're, they wanna try to push it forward.
I thought we were gonna do thirty-first, but then she wanted to push it to twenty-fourth.
Right, cause there wouldn't be enough time.
That'll be six o'clock the next night.
Wouldn't there be a formula under HUD?
I don't know, but, you know, that's.
I could, I could do some research.
I'm not looking for formulas. I'm willing to help reword.
The planning board's job to determine the formula used.
Right.
Yeah.
No, it's just finding one.
No, right.
Right, and the powers that be already have their formulas in existence.
Yeah, someone's gotta have it. Who sets those standards?
And then, I guess we'll just see what happens with the solar at the workshop. And there's not much to be said for it right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if it's too much work, then you don't move it forward, that's fine, you know, it is what it is.
That's not, if we work on the rental, you could almost get that finished up. Solar, I still think you got a lot. Solar, I still think you got a lot. That ain't gonna happen.
Yeah, my biggest gripe last week wasn't if it was, the solar was ready or not. I mean, I wa, I obviously wanted something, even the thing, it was the whole, we're allowed to make our ordn, uh, we're allowed to make an ordinance around it. You know, that was my big, I feel like my big gripe.
We're allowed to, it's just, what are the benefits?
Yeah.
And it was, the only ones I came up with were those maximum size, those performance standards.
Right, and what are they based on?
Yeah, and what did we base those on?
People are going to say they're arbitrary, and they are. Is what I anticipate.
Right.
So, anyway.
Sure.
I will be here Wednesday.
Alright.
In good faith.
Well, thank you for being.
If we have adjourned, I'm going to move that we adjourn. I'm moving that we adjourn.
Alright, Gavin. Second. All in favor? Full or nothing?